This is the Cochise County Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, October 8th. If you would now please rise and say the pledge with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republican Party, which stands for my nation under God, indivisible, and indivisible in its essence.
Thank you very much. I'd like to read the ground rules now. Please turn off cell phones or silence your ringers. Also, please be polite to other stakeholders. No applause, no booing, no cheering. If you are attending in person and wish to speak, fill out a speaker information form and give it to the planning staff. Forms are on the table next to the door. The commission chair will call you at the appropriate time. If you are attending online and wish to speak, raise your hand in the team's chat and provide your name, address, and agenda item number you would like to address. The chair will call you at the appropriate time. Please mute your microphone until called. In-person speakers must come to the podium when called by the chair. Use the microphone to capture your comments. Each elected county supervisor appoints three commissioners to staggered four-year terms. Up to three commissioners are from cities. At least six commissioners are from unincorporated areas. A commissioner's service is pro bono. A quorum is five commissioners. For special use dockets. Special use dockets are approved by this commission. A majority vote passes a motion. A tie vote triggers a rehearing at the next meeting. Appeals of special use decisions are heard by the Board of Supervisors. Appeal procedures can be found on the county's website. For additional assistance, contact Development Services. For other docket decisions. Dockets other than special use requests result in a recommendation forwarded by the commission to the Board of Supervisors. A majority vote passes a motion. A tie vote fails. To voice an opinion regarding a recommendation, you may attend the Board of Supervisors' public hearing. We observe the following time limits: Three minutes for call to public, ten minutes for applicant statements, three minutes for supporters or those opposed, and five minutes for applicant rebuttals. Thank you. I would like to take roll call. District 1, Mr. Limbach?
Present.
Mr. Montgomery?
I am present.
Chair Dupew is present. Mr. Watkins? He's absent. Is that Nathan online?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Watkins will not be joining us this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Embreeze?
Here.
Thank you. Mr. Gonzalez?
Present.
Ms. Fickett?
Present.
Mr. Martske?
Present.
And Mr. Saunders?
Present.
Will you have a quorum? I'd like to introduce our latest member, Mr. Martske. I'm sorry, said the wrong name. Mr. Embreeze. I said his name last and dementia set in. Welcome, sir.
Okay, thank you. Do you want to make a little statement?
No, unless you have something new. We need to get you a microphone now. Mr. Embreeze needs a microphone. Thank you.
Yes, my name is Frank Embreeze. I worked for the county since '72, retired in 2001. I worked at the Planning and Zoning Department. We were the ones that initiated zoning regulations back in '75. Then I got transferred to the Public Works and Engineering Department, and that's when I retired. So I have at least about 30 years' experience working with the county. Ben, thank you.
Thank you, and welcome again. This is the time to approve last month's minutes.
I so move.
Thank you, and a second?
Second.
Thank you. I think it was Mr. Saunders. Now we take a vote. Mr. Limbach?
Aye.
Mr. Montgomery?
Aye.
Mr. Watkins is not here. Mr. Embreeze, you will abstain, I assume?
Abstain.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Approve.
Thank you. Ms. Fickett?
I approve.
Mr. Martske?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Chair approves. Minutes are approved. Thank you very much. Was there any discussion? I'm sorry. Okay, thank you. This is the time for call to public. Pursuant to ARS Section 38-431.01-H, this is an opportunity for the public to comment. Individuals are invited to address the commission on any issue within the commission's jurisdiction. Since commissioners may not discuss items that are not specifically identified on the agenda, commission action taken as a result of public comment will be limited to directing staff to study the matter, responding to any criticism, or scheduling the matter for further consideration. Do we have any call to public speakers?
Chair.
Hearing none online, seeing none in the room, we will move on to the public hearings. First up tonight is SUB 25-02, San Pedro Ranch Estates in Palmareen. The applicant is Calvin Houseley. Are you present?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. I need a motion to remove this docket from the table.
Tell them.
Thank you. Thank you. Do we need to reopen this, or are we open now that we've untabled it, staff? We're open? All right, very good. Mr. Taylor, your report?
Do you want me to read the...
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is the staff recommendation, or excuse me, staff report for the tentative plat, and we have the sample motion on the screen.
Did we decide we needed to say the motion again, or it's untabled?
This is the motion to approve the tentative plat.
So we should go again?
Correct.
May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Limbach?
I move to forward docket SUB 25-02, San Pedro Ranch, tentative plat, with the recommendation of approval to the Board of Supervisors, subject to staff-approved assurance agreement and revisions to the tentative plat and other required submittals as conditioned by the subdivision committee. The commission recommends approval of the waiver to allow an unpaved private subdivision road provided long-term maintenance as described in recorded HOA documents.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Now we have Mr. Taylor.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. This is the staff presentation for the San Pedro Ranch Estates tentative plat. The property is located north of Benson in the Palmareen area. The property is zoned RU4. There are proposed eight lots, each of those meeting the four-acre designation. Location map shows the property's location at San Pedro Ranch Road and Palmareen Road, and this would be about one mile northeast of the city of Benson. Staff published notice as required by the zoning regulations on July 23rd, 2025. Just a brief overview of the subdivision regs, with the caveat that we haven't, I don't believe we've had a subdivision plat appear before this commission in several years, so this has been a learning experience for staff, well, certainly for me as the case planner, to want to give some basics about the subdivision regs. So state law prohibits the subdivision of more than five lots without an approved plat. We would typically do a minor land division for five or fewer lots as an administrative application, but in this case, because there are six or more lots involved, it does require a plat, and the subject, the subdivision regulations do apply. Per the zoning regs, it's to promote health, safety, orderly growth, and infrastructure. T tentative plat approval is good for two years, meaning that it has two years before it has to go to the Board of Supervisors for final approval. Staff can authorize a one-year extension, and additional extensions beyond that would have to be approved by the commission. So the commission's role basically is to approve as presented with the recommendation to the board, conditional approval, which is what we're recommending, or denial, which would require the tentative plat to reappear before the commission. Some basics on the tentative plat. North arrow subdivision details surrounding properties and zoning, the zoning of the property itself. We would want to see topography information, existing washes, standoff distances, the HOA reference, as well as any infrastructure, being that this is a very rural subdivision with eight lots. This is not something that we would really consider a typical subdivision. We would think of a 20, 50, 100-lot subdivision where we've got drainage issues, we've got stormwater retention systems, we've got lights, sidewalks, and all kinds of things. In this particular case, this is just going to be eight four-acre lots with one private road down the middle. These are just some screenshots. These are included in the commission's package, just for familiarity, just to ensure that we see. This particular sheet does have some general notes on the left-hand side that we had several comments on. The applicant has provided some additional information in those notes. And then the lot layouts, again showing that there are eight lots proposed, and this again is at the corner of Palmareen Road and San Pedro Ranch Road. We are requiring a one-foot non-access easement for lots 1 through 3 to prevent direct access onto Palmareen Road. And some additional information with topography data, showing the proposed location of the residences that build out. If this was a five-lot subdivision, these would appear strictly as administrative applications, go through residential permit review, but since this is a collection under a plat, all of those drainage issues need to be identified upfront. Again, the applicant is proposing a private street with a cul-de-sac and has requested a waiver from the hard surface standard of the engineering requirements. Madam Chair, this is a very quick overview of this tentative plat. This concludes our presentation of the tentative plat for San Pedro Ranch Estates. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. This is the time for the applicant's statement. Mr. Houseley? Please state your name and address. You have 10 minutes.
Hi, my name is Calvin Houseley. I have submitted an application to subdivide Lot 1 of San Pedro Ranch into eight four-acre lots, with the remaining four acres from the 36 acres to be attached to my existing residence that borders it. I have also asked for a variance to not allow, or to allow, a dirt road as the road coming, connecting it to Palmareen Road is dirt as well. Also, with only eight four-acre lots and no opportunity for additional housing on that road, it will be very low traffic volume. This has been a long, long process with a lot of hard work and money invested. I appreciate the board's consideration.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
This is the time for public comment. I do not have any forms. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak? Or is there anyone online?
Is there anyone online that would like to speak on this docket?
Hearing none. We'll move on. This is the time for the applicant's response. Mr. Houseley, you want to waive that? Thank you. Public hearing portion is then closed. This is the time for commission questions and discussion. You may ask staff or the applicant.
Yes, I have a question. Did they run a traverse around the whole property? Because what I saw, that county assessor had an opening on one of the lots. It didn't close, technically.
On the survey portion, I saw that comment also.
Yes, Madam Chair, Commissioner Embreeze. We did, the applicant's survey team or engineering team did ensure that those lots do close at this point, and we validated that.
Okay. Then on the tentative plat, it shows topography. Is it going to be showing topography how it's going to be drained?
Yeah, Madam Chair, Commissioner Embreeze. The applicant has provided a drainage analysis. We did require, even though it does make the tentative plat a little bit more difficult to digest initially, we do have those drainage areas in conjunction with the topography, as well as some of the standoff distances from the existing washes. And the erosion hazard setbacks, I believe, are also documented in that drainage analysis.
Another question is, who's going to maintain the main road? Is it going to be a private road? So the county will not be responsible?
And if I may add to that, Madam Chair, we are requiring that as a condition for the establishment of a basic HOA document that requires mandatory participation in maintaining that road.
Mr. Taylor, could you elaborate a little more on that? The county is requiring the HOA simply because of the road? Or because HOAs are required in all subdivisions in this county?
HOAs are required. In this particular case, because it's an eight-lot subdivision, and we don't have any significant common areas other than the private road itself, the applicant is able to effectively, let's say, tailor a homeowner association document which focuses more or less on the maintenance of that road. And that's what we're asking for. That's the primary concern with the HOA document itself, but it is a requirement.
And was there any discussion as to why we're not taking that into county maintenance?
I don't believe that we're going to take it into county maintenance. I do recall that discussion with the engineering department. I don't remember exactly what the rationale was for that. I think it was just simply based on the distance of the road itself.
Thank you so much. Other questions? Mr. Embreeze, are you good?
Yes.
All right. Mr. Taylor, could we get a summary and a recommendation?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to add a couple of logistical points. As the commission is aware, Palmareen Water Company did provide a serve letter. SSVEC is the provider in the area. Individual septic systems and propane systems, Century Link, and then the private street, which will be maintained by the owners. Staff agreement is conditional approval of Subdivision 25-02, San Pedro Ranch Estates, tentative plat with the following conditions: Provide the county with a homeowners association covenants and restrictions governing the association, including a comprehensive road and common area maintenance plan, if applicable, to be recorded with the final plat. Homeowner membership is mandatory. All private streets and common areas shall be maintained by the HOA, and covenants shall provide a means for obtaining adequate financial support for the association. Number two, a chip-sealed apron shall be built on San Pedro Ranch Road at Palmareen Road. Three, include dedication statements for access and utility easement on Sheet 5 of the tentative plat submittal. That was a comment from SSVEC. Additional revisions. Revise the cover sheet by adding revision number and date of revision. These are very simple Scrivener-type additions. Revise the description on the plat indicating lots 1 through 8 versus 1 through 9. Add the following general notes to the plat. Rainwater harvesting and reuse shall be utilized where practical, and sprinkler heads shall be installed no closer than eight inches from impermeable surfaces. We do have water conservation section within our tentative plat application. There is one note currently on the tentative plat. These two notes were added subsequent to that. We'd like to have those added to the tentative plat as well. An insurance agreement shall be submitted prior to Board of Supervisors' public hearing and recorded in conjunction with the final plat. And that concludes staff's presentation. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We have a motion to forward on the open. Is there any further discussion? I do have one more comment. Sorry, since this is new for us. An assurance agreement. Can you go back one slide, and can we clarify that?
Sure, Madam Chair. The assurance agreement is a requirement of subdivisions regardless of the number of lots. I'm actually going to ask for Mr. Sparson's assistance with this. He has a little bit more familiarity than I do.
Trust, and once those subdivision improvements are completed, then we can do lot releases. We can release one at a time or several at a time, but typically, we do verify through our engineering department that those improvements have been completed. Once we verify that, then we can do a lot release and it gets sent to a pioneer title, and then they'll go ahead and release the lot. But that's what we typically do with their third-party trust agreement.
And what is the time? When does that expire, or does it?
It typically is for three years. As of late, we've been extending those out to five years, because depending on the size of the subdivision, it seems like the three years passes very quickly. So some of the ones we've done recently, of course, they are larger in size with more lots. But, you know, this initial one, depending on what the timeline is by the subdivider, we can look at whether three or five years would be appropriate at the time that it's drafted up.
Thank you very much.
All right. I have a question. And is there any kind of inflation for that bond that you're going to be issuing now? I suppose the bond came in at half a million. When they start doing all the improvements, it's only three-quarters of a million. I had the experience there, when I was there, that we had subdivisions that did not have enough funding to do the improvements, like roads and whatever has to be done.
You know, and typically, we've done, like I said, the third-party trust. What you're talking about, a lot of times, there's an engineer's estimate that's produced that will identify what the cost of those subdivision improvements are with a contingency, but we have not done that. Typically, what I've seen in the almost 10 years I've been with the county, that these third-party trusts work, they are held, the lots will not be released by the title company without, you know, the county signing off on that. So I am familiar with what you're speaking of, but I've not seen that done in too many times with the county, so.
Thank you. All right. I'd like to call for the vote. Mr. Limbach?
Aye.
Mr. Montgomery?
Aye, to approve.
Mr. Embreeze?
Approve.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
And Ms. Fickett?
Aye.
Mr. Martske?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. It is unanimous. Congratulations on your subdivision plan. This item will be forwarded to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation of approval. Any person not agreeing with this action should attend the Board of Supervisors' meeting dealing with this docket. Once the machine catches up with us here, we'll be moving on to docket RZ 25-14 in Sunsites on Sandal Street. Applicant requests rezoning from SR 22 to RU 2. David and Diane Rozy, are you here? Are you online?
Madam Chair, the applicant has recently had a medical procedure, so I advised him to join us remotely. I'm not sure if he was able to do that.
This is more or less the down zone. I think we can proceed. All right. I have a motion.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Limbach?
I move to recommend approval of docket RZ 25-14 to the Board of Supervisors without special conditions, rezoning tax parcel 25-12-347B from SR 22 to RU 2. The factors in favor of approval constituting the findings of fact.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Martske. Mr. Taylor, your report?
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. This is the staff presentation for docket RZ 25-14. An applicant initiated request to rezone property from SR 22 to RU 4. Again, the applicants are David and Diane Rozy. The property is located on Sandal Street in Sunsites #7. The property totals approximately three acres. Again, this is a requested rezoning to rural. Comprehensive plan designation is rural. The property is currently undeveloped, and the applicant wishes to develop the property for residential land use. Property again is located in Sunsites #7, approximately one mile west of Highway 191. The applicant is requesting downzoning three acres from SR to RU with the intent of adding some flexibility relative to housing types and accessory structures. As the commission is probably aware, Sunsites generally consists of nine units. Most of these were platted in the early 1960s, so it is an antiquated subdivision, largely unbuilt. Units number three, seven, and nine do not fall within the Mid-Sulphur Springs Valley Area Plan and are designated strictly by the comp plan as rural. Units seven and nine are non-contiguous with all the other Sunsites units. About 25 rezones have been filed with the county since 2002 to rezone property to rural or to meet that four-acre minimum. Obviously, since the property is three acres and we're rezoning the property to RU 2, it is not eligible for an opt-out permit. So a few drawn images. This would be viewing to the northeast with Apache Station in the background. And this would be viewing to the northwest. The southeast, and it should be noted that all of the property to the south of Sandal Street are rural. They're all zoned rural. This is a close-up of the property. And in the upper left-hand corner, this is Sandal Street viewing to the east, and in the lower right, Sandal Street viewing to the west. And this was only a couple of days after a pretty significant rain, and you can see the effect on the road. Section 2.63 of the zoning regulations identifies 15 factors to evaluate rezoning applications. Rezoning to RU 2 complies with eight of nine applicable factors. The applicant did not provide a concept plan. The request complies with applicable factors except for that concept plan requirement. The requested zoning district is compatible with the relatively undeveloped rural residential nature of the property. Staff did not receive any opposition to the application. Staff did notice, per the zoning regulations, this application between 15 and 19 September. And Madam Chair, this concludes staff's presentation of docket RZ 25-14. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. This is the time the applicant speaks. Have the applicants come online?
Mr. Rozy, are you online with us?
That's all right. We'll proceed. I have no forms. Is there anyone online that wishes to speak to this matter? I think at this time, we'll declare the public portion closed. It's the time for commission discussion. Does anyone have any questions?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Limbach?
Mr. Taylor, do we know the, he mentioned the construction of a shed slash shop. Do we know the nature of the shop? Is it going to be a future business or just a workshop, personal workshop?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Limbach, my understanding based on conversations with the applicant is it strictly a residential application for the property, for both the principal and the accessory structure? And if I may add one more thing, we've had numerous conversations in the past about spot zoning. Obviously, this would be a case because we don't have any other rural zoning within Sunsites #7. We do have some general business zoning, however. But given the property's location, the absence of infrastructure, the proximity to a passageway station, I think we would prefer to see lower residential densities in this area. So in this particular case, rural would be an appropriate zoning change. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Taylor, is there, what was the resolution to the code compliance in 2015? That's 10 years ago. These people have purchased this property since that time?
Madam Chair, I do believe that the current owners did own that property then and were storing materials on site, and someone complained, somebody presumably driving down Sandal Street. And there are very few residences in the area, but nonetheless, it was abated once that notice was sent out.
The property looks pristine at this point.
Correct.
All right, done. Anything else? We do have a motion. I'd like to call for the vote. Mr. Limbach?
Aye.
Mr. Montgomery?
Aye.
Mr. Embreeze?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Ms. Fickett?
Aye.
Mr. Martske?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. It is unanimous. This item will be forwarded to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation of approval. Any person not agreeing with this action should attend the Board of Supervisors' meeting dealing with this docket. Thank you. Next. SU 25-24 is Fort Grant Road Construction Services. The applicants are Kyle and Jennifer Wortman. Are you present? Thank you. Could I have a motion, please, to approve docket SU 25-24?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Limbach?
You can go ahead.
Are you tired now?
No.
More now? Commissioners, I will move to approve docket SU 25-24 with the conditions of approval recommended by staff. The factors in favor of approval constituting the findings of fact.
Second.
Thank you, gentlemen. This is the time for dis- This is the time for dis, I'm sorry, Mr. Taylor, you first.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. This is the staff presentation for docket SU 25-24. A special use authorization request to allow a contract construction business. The applicants are Kyle Wortman and Jennifer Wortman. The property is located at 1270 and 1282 Fort Grant Road near Wilcox. Uh, the project site encompasses four different parcels totaling approximately 16 acres. The property is owned residential, R36. Um, contract construction services are permissible on R36 with special use authorization approval. Um, the plan designates this area for neighborhood, neighborhood conservation because of its significant build-out with residences. Um, it is located within growth area B. The current use of the property is residential with contract construction service. Um, and my understanding is the service has been on the site for approximately 10 years. Again, the property is located along Fort Grant Road, about one-quarter mile from the city of Wilcox municipal boundary and one mile from Interstate 10. Um, again, the properties are zoned R36 and designated neighborhood conservation by the comp plan. Um, business has been there since about 2014. Parcels 23A and 36, which are the two that front Fort Grant Road, both have residences, established residences. I believe that they, one of them dates at least to, to the 1980s. Um, and most of the accessory structures were on the site, uh, when the applicants purchased the property. Um, the other two parcels to the upper left are undeveloped, and they are currently used for equipment parking and storage. And those parcels total approximately 10.8 acres combined. There's a few drawn images. This would be viewing to the north with all four parcels highlighted. This is a closer shot of the two parcels fronting on Fort Grant Road. Um, these are about 4.8 acres combined. You can see the residents on the two parcels. There's a site-built residence on the westernmost parcel, and there's a mobile home on the easternmost parcel, more towards the back. It's an additional view, um, showing the two parcels that are used for vehicle parking and storage. This shows the residents to the east and to the west of the storage areas. This is a view from Chastain Lane, showing the residences, um, to the west of the parking area. This would, this is a little bit closer shot of the closest residents to that storage yard, um, and the folks that reside there are in attendance and wish to address the commission. Couple of, uh, closer shots, uh, some of the vehicles and equipment on the site. Some of the storage areas on the site on those two parcels that are used for storage and parking. And this is a view from, uh, one of the adjacent parcels to the south, when this would be one of the parcels that fronts along Fort Grant Road. This shows some of the equipment that is stored in there. The applicants have provided a site plan showing the four parcels that are involved. Um, as you can see on parcel to the south, which would be parcel 17E, um, to the west, 17C, and to the west of that, 17B, those are also owned by the applicant. Section 2.48 of the zoning regulations identifies 10 factors to evaluate special use requests. Should be noted that the neighborhood conservation division, or excuse me, the neighborhood conservation section of the comp plan, uh, makes two specific points about the neighborhood conservation designation. One being the area to be designated as a developed residential neighborhood that warrants protection from non-residential uses. The other one is the areas in an approved subdivision for which all improvements are in place and constructed to minimum county standards. In this particular case, that first bullet would, would apply. So the use, um, as, as proposed, um, the zoning regulations do allow contract construction services in R36. Um, based on the neighborhood conservation designation, we would be, um, uh, opposed to an upzone to general business or to light industrial, obviously, because of the number of residences in the area. Business uses are typically appropriate along major roadways, including arterials such as Fort Grant Road. Um, we've received quite a bit of, uh, public input from both property owners inside and outside of the notification area. We did receive significant opposition from a, from an adjacent property owner. Um, the business activity did result in a neighborhood complaint, which is what, uh, precluded the special use application. And numerous off-site impacts have been identified, uh, dust, noise, and visual, with the focus really being on dust. The applicant did send letters out, um, as required by the zoning regulations on 24 June, and staff, um, noticed this docket in accordance with the zoning regulations between 15 and 19 September. So staff has received 10 written responses in favor from property owners within the notification area. And we did mail 39 notices. We received five written responses in favor from property owners outside the notification area. Two property owners within the notification area responded with concerns about off-site impacts, specifically dust. And that's why there's, uh, instead of red X's, there's red circles there, because neither of the property owners are necessarily opposed to the business. They just want some action taken to mitigate the impacts on them and their properties. And we did receive a written response, which is one of the handouts we provided to the commission, uh, from the city of Wilcox. It's in favor of the application. And this property is located approximately 1,000 feet west of the city of Wilcox boundary. Madam Chair and Commissioners, this concludes staff's presentation of docket SU 25-24. A special use authorization request to allow a contract construction business. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. This is the time for the applicant's statement. If you'd like to come forward, you have 10 minutes. Please state your name and address first.
Jennifer Portman, 1282 North Fort Grant Road, Wilcox, Arizona. Thank you all for serving on the planning and zoning board and for hearing this case. Thank you also to staff, as they were very helpful to us. My name is Jennifer. Our family is Contract Construction Company. Drilling and pumps, we do well work. We serve the Sulphur Springs Valley and the surrounding areas. We're located, of course, at 1282 North Fort Grant Road and 1270. Our goals of our business, as well as in our personal lives, are to provide excellent and reliable services while maintaining our upstanding reputation in business, our community, and our families. As soon as we received a complaint from our neighbor, we acted quickly and efficiently to address the dust problem. Even before the complaint, we have strived to be good neighbors in our landscaping and organization of all of our equipment. Using gravel to cover driveways and parking areas, line equipment for neatness, and mowing weeds. Since the notice of this complaint, we have spent an additional $10,000 in gravel, not including the cost of spreading that gravel, to, again, try to lessen the dust. We have also installed an extensive sprinkler system to the 17E, the front parcel, um, as to abate some of the dust and use it for any cattle that my children drag home. As you all know, we've had a very dry winter last year and a correspondingly dry, windy, dusty spring. Our efforts to mitigate dust are ongoing and will continue in the years ahead. Thank you for all of your time and attention in this matter.
Thank you so much. We may call you back. This is the time for the public portion. I'd like to ask if there are other persons that wish to comment. I do have, is it Danielle Capple? Would you like to come forward now? You have three minutes after you state your name and address.
My name is Danielle Capple. I live at 1363 North Tyse Lane. I'd like to first state that I have nothing against the Wortmans themselves, or their kind of business, or what they have accomplished. In picture five, you can see where our land is to the Wortmans. Our house is in the corner of the L shape. In August 21, they cleared 16 acres and never put gravel down or anything for the dust. There was gravel put down behind the office. Pictures seven through 11 is before gravel was put down, and pictures 13 through 29 show after they put gravel down, four years later. There are not, there are not, oh, excuse me, there are, these are not all the same day. These pictures are just of one year before and during this of four years. It is still an issue. Pictures 61A and 61B show how thin gravel was laid and only in front and behind the vehicles. 62 through 69 show how they did not lay any gravel on all the exposed 16 acres that is driven on continuously by the Wortmans, workers, semis, to drop things off. Picture 37 through 50 show how the blow sand has overwhelmed our property. My husband has endured tremendous serious asthma attacks due to this neglect. Our house and windows were sandblasted. AC had to be serviced twice in a month and a half. And picture 38 and 40 show this blow sand is 14 inches deep along the south and west fence line. It was estimated to remove the blow sand on the south and west fence line at 22 yards of sand, 15 truckloads to haul out, and the cost of $11,000. This is just the fence line. This is not the land. If the Wortmans were given special use permit, we would like it checked regularly and at any expansion. We would like them to install a seven-foot cinder block continuous wall on the south and west fence line. This will help with sand and site. I am sure the business will expand, and where we sit, we hear, see, and are aware of all of their activities. To install chip seal on all 16 acres they cleared four years ago, this will help with traffic, dust, and future expansion. We have endured this for four years and cannot take another year of these Wilcox winds. I am leaving this property to my disabled son and his caretaker. I do not want to leave them in with this kind of concern. When all is said and done, the Wortman boys will expand the business and prosper, as our land has been damaged and devalued. If I were to ever sell our property because of this, it has made it complicated. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Kevin Capple? You also have three minutes, sir?
My name's Kevin Capple. Live at 1363 Tyse Lane. The property that, uh, my wife just explained that we border the Wortmans. And we never opposed for them to have their business there. What we oppose of is them negatively affecting our quality of life through them not controlling the dust. Uh, it's through health issues, our property damage, and as you can see, all the sand has blown onto our land. Now, we had an estimate to remove 220 yards along the fence line at a cost of $11,000, which, I mean, it behooves me why we should have to pay to do that, whereas in comparison, if I was to go, uh, knock out some windows and their equipment, I'd be accountable, and I would have to pay for that damage. In addition, um, we would like the, uh, the permit to go through for them, but with, with conditions such as chip sealing, there are 16 acres that was cleared, the, uh, continuous masonry wall on our west and south side, and also a time limit of six months to get this work done, as the spring winds will come in March and will have issues again. And also some sort of a follow-up to those, uh, conditions that we are asking for, and that this special use permit stay open in case there is issues or those conditions aren't met, that we have an avenue to, uh, to pursue this again. And if you all don't have any questions for me, have a good evening.
Thank you, sir. We may ask. We also have Rick Northee wishing to speak. Your address, sir? Three minutes.
My name is Rick Northee. I live at 1354 Chastain Lane. I have five acres of land that is adjacent to the north side of the Wortman's, uh, project. Um, I have 700 feet of fence line, and I have talked with Mr. Wortman about some of these concerns, and he has been very reactive to that. I witnessed him coming in and putting in all these different, um, green belts. He's put down all this gravel. And if you went back one, down to the last one where the fence line is? If you look along these fence lines, I moved there 10 years ago. My fence line has two feet, had a two feet of buildup on that land before Mr. Wortman ever came along. We get, a lot of our dust comes off the playa, and it comes off the rodeo grounds, and unfortunately, that property is right in, it, it's a natural way for the wind to blow, and it, it all centralizes it. I don't believe that all this dust comes off Mr. Wortman's property. I believe that it comes naturally here in Arizona from everywhere. Um, I would, I would urge you to go ahead and, and let him have this rezoning. Uh, reason why I think that that land would, would probably be a better thing for the county and, and us, is that borders, uh, Fort Grant Road, which is a highly, uh, used highway. And in years to come down the road, I see that that, that whole area along there would probably be going away from residential property. I've talked to Mr. Wortman as early as this morning, and he ensures me that he has many more things that he plans on doing. He listened to my concerns, and I appreciate, uh, their business. They've been there for me when I've had a pump problem, and it's very essential to our community to keep their business running. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone online that wishes to speak to this docket? Hearing none. This is the time for the applicant's response. Would you like to come forward? You have five minutes. Sir?
Yes, Madam Chair, Mr. Haas, it's a speaker request form, which is here.
Very well. Sear name and address, three minutes.
Thank you all for your service and for your time. My name is Ted Haas. I live at 211 South Arizona Avenue in Wilcox, Arizona. And I support, uh, the Wortman's efforts, uh, to get this, uh, on this agenda item. Uh, the Wortman family has been nothing but a great family and friends to, to myself and my family, and they're very giving to the community. Uh, they also run a, a pump and well service that does excellent work. They've done a lot of work for my nephews on their farm where I also work. Their equipment, I've seen at their place and at the job site, is always neat and clean, and their work area is always tidy when they're working on a well site. This family and their employees have always been very polite and helpful. I've been called sir by their sons since they were little boys, and I'm not a sir, but they're very polite people. I drive by their property nearly every day along Fort Grant Road as I drive to work. I observe, I have observed only a neat, well-laid-out yard, very clean and tidy. Again, I support this family's efforts for this special use permit. Thank you.
And thank you. Is there anyone else? You don't see anyone online? Good enough. Applicants' response time. Thank you. Public portion is closed. This is the time for commission discussion. Do we have any questions for the applicants or staff?
Well, as it turns out, I do.
Mr. Montgomery, go.
I have a couple on, on, um, both sides, if you don't mind. Um, if we could look at, well, that's one of the pictures, Steph. If we could go to the photos, say, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, et cetera. We're looking at what appears to be a well-established business, and, uh, plenty of investment there. I would say a lot of investment there, just in the, uh, vehicles and the trailers and all that. That's something I think this commission likes to, um, encourage in Cochise County, is That's something I think this commission likes to encourage in Cochise County is business-free enterprise and people who are willing to take a risk with their own money and time and sweat and blood to build something. That's good for everybody. Got some awesome reviews here already today. So I am happy to vote in favor of this application, but I do have one reservation. And it is with the complainants about the dirt. Because the pictures are pretty severe, and I myself have personal experience one time about a half mile downwind from a project in the Palominas area where I live. Wide open, the wind coming from the south, and the dirt from the project there, which was a grading, encompassed the entire neighborhood. My house was covered, couldn't see across the yard, couldn't breathe. It was not bearable. And they shouldn't have been working on that day with high winds in that type. I know what it's like when you have little kids or you have a problem. It can be a problem. So if we could look at some of the pictures of the dust, is it, folks, is it from your home that those photos were taken?
Yes.
Okay. There you go. Should they come up and talk a bit? Or should we just keep going?
Well, typically, we don't.
Okay. These pictures, can you tell us, is that a common event? Is that every day when there's activity? Or is this just natural wind? Yeah.
We need to capture your comments, ma'am. We need to capture your comments in the microphone. Thank you.
I do have some pictures that I sent in with these that are of where it started at the Warpman's, and it is the natural wind, but you can see how it progressed. And then as the days go, like winds in Wilcox can either start like at eleven, and you know that they're just going to be crazy, and they're always coming from the west. Did I answer your question?
I guess it does in a way, but I mean, is this a common event? Is this every week, every other day?
Well, March, April, May, Wilcox does have very severe winds. Yes, sir. But this, things like this happen. I mean, the winds can be from anywhere from fifteen miles per hour a day up to twenty to thirty, and the stronger ones sometimes up to fifty.
What I'm trying to determine is, are these little dust storms here the result of activity on the construction side over there, or is this a natural event?
Oh, no, these are coming from the Warpman's. I have pictures, Tim, I don't know what number they are, that show that where it starts on, you can even see it where it's on their grounds, and then it comes forward to our ground.
If there is no activity going on on the construction side, then there's nothing like that. Is that what you're telling us?
Well, when they drive a lot of their, they used to have a company that they rented the land out to for two and a half years. They had like five or six trucks, and it was the, they were out-of-state fiber optic company. And they caused a lot of dust, but I mean, they drove all over the property. So there was a lot of dust, but this, there it is. See, you can see where it's, the wind starts to pick up, and you can see it coming across, I mean, you can see the, where they did not gravel and where it's coming, and it ends up on ours and then on other neighbors.
So the wind is not something that we can really do anything about. Dirt on the ground is not something we can do much about. But if there's unnatural activity going on, maybe we can do something about that.
I understand.
Given all of the endorsement and the friends to this application, and what seems to be several efforts on their part to knock down the dirt.
They have, and I appreciate that. I have nothing against the Warpman's. Chris Warpman is one of the nicest people you could ever meet, and their kids are just fantastic. They take their hats off when they see a lady. They're wonderful people. What I'm saying is, a lot of this is caused because it's not gravelled where they cleared. If they had it gravelled or something to take care of, a good addition of this, this sand or blow sand.
Thank you. Is this a quote for eleven thousand dollars, something that you guys acquired?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Has that been done?
No, sir.
Being talked about, okay. And was it thought that this would solve the problem?
It solved a lot of the problem because the, as you know, with blow sand, it's just like a tumbleweed. It just goes and goes. The thing of it is, the wind's going to keep picking up. It's just going to keep picking. A lot of that fourteen inches is going to keep going on through our land. Then I have neighbors, because my land is clear, I have neighbors that are starting to say, hey, Ms. Caffel, take care of this sand issue.
Is there, so you mentioned that you all know each other and you have mutual respect?
Yes, sir.
And that is good. Is there something else that you can discuss with each other? If this project for eleven thousand dollars has not yet taken place?
Well, the thing of it is, sir, that we asked Jennifer to please come over, and we wanted them to look at the land. And unfortunately, I was hung up on, and so Chris did, the first time that I did go to him, he was very kind and very nice, said he should have taken care of it four years ago. And so the next day, they did come out and gravel. I think it's sixty-one and sixty, sixty-one A and sixty-one B. It shows where they had gravelled in front and behind the vehicles, but not on the other larger acreage that is, that they still travel on. So.
I'll ask maybe one more question for you, and then I would like to respond if we can get that. These dust storms on your, on your house that you had the photos of is fairly common? You're living under that circumstance all the time? Is that right?
Can you answer some?
I'm trying to figure out how often that happens to you. Is your daily life covered in dirt in the air?
It's not daily, but like my wife said, in the windy months, March through May, yes, it is.
Everyone in Arizona has that experience.
I agree with that. But if I can make a comment regarding our fence line, when we put that down, that was at elevation. That was eight years, seven or eight years ago. Now, through the wind and the dust that's blown from that sixteen acres of the Warpman has built up up to fourteen inches long our fence line. There's no other way, no other area it comes from.
I think.
We've watched it blow across their property onto ours.
I think it was picture thirty-eight through fifty. If you look at those, it shows where the wind just, I mean, it's just rippled. I mean, that sand is just overtaking our property like foam. It's, I understand what you're saying. If you live in Arizona, if you don't like the dust to flee, right? I understand that. But the issue, sir, is that pictures like forty-six, but like the other ones that I was explaining. The thing of it is, is that you can go other places, and it's not as much of a ball of sand like it is coming off that acreage and coming on, because there's no coverage there. There's never been any coverage there on the sixteen acres, sir.
But there could be.
We'd appreciate that.
So the pictures of your house being covered in dust storms would not be acceptable to me if I had to live that way all the time. But I do understand where we live, and I moved there, so there's going to be dirt. But there are solutions, and I think you have discussed some of them, including this contract for eleven thousand dollars. And I guess I would thank you for your answers right now, and I only have maybe one question for the applicants.
For your time.
Okay. Can we go there, Ms. Chairman?
Absolutely.
Chair Lee? Thank you. Again, I want to reiterate, at least on my part, but I believe the whole commission is happy to see people in business sacrificing everything that they do to be in business.
Yes, sir. We're not, we're not beaten on. We did this through hard work and sweat and tears.
Yes, ma'am. I know what you mean. So with this, with this little situation, we're glad you are heavily invested, obviously.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And we want you to keep doing that. I do. So there is this one little problem about choking out the neighbors on dirt. This is a contract for gravel abatement, you might say. Is there something that can be done? If, if your house were covered in dirt as the way that they showed their house, could you accept that, and would you want to do something?
No, I would want to do something, and that's why when they came to us. So since two thousand and twenty-one, we have spread gravel every year in different areas. Once this complaint was brought to our attention, we had four hundred tons of gravel carried in. Over the years since twenty-one to current, I have spent upwards of thirty thousand plus in gravel alone. Then we put in the sprinklers at the front to try to, we didn't want it on the road, on Fort Grant Road. We have a lot of that problem down, further down Fort Grant Road with dirt. We went and cleaned their fence line on the outside. When they asked us to do that, we went and did it. Then they called and wanted us to clean on the inside of their, their property, and I did say no. I had done everything on the outside that I could possibly do. We bought a big gun sprinkler to be able to sprinkle out further where the native grasses aren't growing. But we're affected by the dirt as well, and it's coming from everywhere.
Sure. Do you own the fence proper?
They own the fence.
They own the fence. Okay.
So they own that fence, and Mr. Northy owns the one running north.
Well, I did read in here somewhere, one of the options was to sheet that fence with something, metal or screen.
Right. She actually had ADEQ come out and investigate it. And there is a slide in that, in that presentation that shows there to be no air quality problems. I mean, we had done more than anyone else was going to do.
It does appear so.
So, and we're not against trying to help, be helpful. We want to be good neighbors. We want to be able to run our business and raise our kids and our grandkids to do the same thing.
I myself have had to modify my own fences for more privacy or quietness or lighting or dirt from others who eventually moved in closer to me. It was on my fence, and so I did it on my side of my fence. That may be an option over here, if you folks.
I just don't think that they realize how expensive a seven-foot block wall is going to be. And that's a financial burden to my family and my business as well. Now, I mean, I'm not saying that, like I said, we're going to be the people that do what we need to do to have happy neighbors, but.
Okay. Just hoping that some resolve can be found, possibly from your side of your fence, to help block the dirt coming over, which is going to come, we cannot control the weather in Arizona.
We tried some little sapling trees, you know, planted a line. Of course, that didn't work because it was hot and dry and dusty. Not to say that we wouldn't go back through there and plant something else that was, you know, of a little larger stature to get started, but.
Okay. I think for now, you've all answered my questions. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Limbach?
Mr. Taylor, would you mind bringing up special staff recommendation number four? Well, the staff recommendations. And Mrs. Warpman, I'll ask you to step up at least one more time, please. Because I want to ask if you are agreeable to complying with condition number four, the recommendation number four.
I worry about that parcel in particular because it is right on Fort Grant Road, and that is where we have just spent six thousand dollars in a sprinkler system for it to be all the way up on seventeen E. Partly, I would be in agreeance to looking into the chip seal or something along that nature. I don't have a problem trying to put some landscaping.
While we're discussing this, could I ask a question? It says a six-foot in height plus landscaping shall be built along the south property line of seventeen E. Isn't that adjacent to Fort Grant Road? Is that what we mean to say?
Yes, Madam Chair, the contract construction services require GB to be allowed by right, and that is one of the requirements by the GB district is a five-foot strip of landscaping along the screening.
But what about the six-foot wall? I didn't think that would be required on the front inch. I thought it would be required on the adjacent to the other residential parcel.
South and west property lines?
Right, that's, that's correct. A block wall would not be required along the south's property line of seventeen E.
Okay.
That's an, that's an error.
Okay, good, because this is one of the things I wanted to bring up to the Warpman's, that these, these are parts of code. If we had entertained your permit in the past, you would have been required to build these walls that are abutting other residential properties. So we kind of have a tension here going on about getting that done. And I know that's very expensive, but it would automatically solve the problem with the capitals. Correct? Am I looking at these parcels properly? Yeah. So I understand that it's very expensive, but Mr. Limbach is asking you if you're willing to go there.
Yeah, we're going to do whatever we have to do.
Okay.
To legally comply. I mean, it, we're not trying to get out of doing what is required of us.
Okay, all right. Well, that reassures me.
So.
And then the language in this then, seventeen E, we really need to clarify where they need to build block walls before we move forward here.
Question.
Comment? I've heard both sides. I want to congratulate you for the economic development that you bring to that area. Dust is just a way of life. In our country here, we find dust in our canned goods. And a six-foot wall is just going to create a disparity on height.
Yep.
On the windy side. You can spend all the money you have and more, and a structure like a six-foot wall is not going to do much for very long.
No, sir, it's not.
I suggest that seem to be good stewards of your land, you keep your property in good shape and just care about the community, that you get together with your neighbors and maybe consider more natural landscaping, windbreak kind of situation. Although, that's not going to stop the dust that we all get.
Right.
Every spring, some years worse than others, but we can't stop. It's a natural occurrence, and it's just part of our being in southeastern Arizona in the spring.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for what you've done so far. That's very generous.
Thank you. Like I said, we really do try to control our dust. And a lot of that dust that the pictures were, that she was showing, those are during dust storms. Those are not from my guy, my equipment. The roads that my guys travel with equipment does have large, at least inch and a quarter gravel, and it is not sparsely spread. There is one back, back row near Mr. Northeast, sorry, Mr. Northeast Fence that nothing wants to grow there. Haven't had any rain. There was no. And so we really don't use much traffic on that particular part of the property. And that would be where most of the dust would be coming from at this point after finishing gravel.
Most of that dust, that particular soil that you have is high in salt.
Uh huh.
And it seals. And it's hard to establish vegetation. You have a beautiful sprinkler system and all that, but it's still going to be a challenge.
Right.
It it just happened to be on an area that has a very salt, very high salt content in your soils.
Yes, sir.
And that's just the way it's gonna be.
Yes, sir. I uh, when she first approached me about it and said, well, she had somebody come and look at her soil and that her, no, nothing would ever grow there again. And I said, well, I have the same soil and the same dirt is blowing on me to my house in my vehicles in my my grass is growing. She said, but you water it.
It's sealed. You know, most of that water that you get in that area sits there till it evaporates. There's no real penetration.
Yes, sir. And especially along that back fence. I I promise you that's what's happening back there.
Yeah, and the fact that you have taken care of sealing or treating your traffic areas.
We have a water truck. We've tried running the water truck on numerous occasions. You just can't keep up with it because it will not penetrate that ground.
Yeah, it's a pretty.
We we've done many things to try to to help with the dust.
I think that you've been very reasonable. Uh, it's important that you keep working with your neighbors so that you get to that understanding that it's a tough call in both ways.
Right.
And uh, all you can do is that uh, hope for days where we don't get any wind.
Yes, I agree.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez, and thank you, Ms. Wartman. I would like to direct the commission back to item number four. I think as we work through each sentence of this paragraph, problems will be solved. They will be solved for the capitals to the best that they can be solved in Dusty Wilcox. And also for this commission to approve your special use. So so again, can we go back and parse out item number four, sentence by sentence? And be sure that our applicants understand there's a lot required of them in that number four item. So i- if you don't mind, ma'am, if you'd hang with us, come back to the microphone. Let's start again. You said you'd be willing to do this and Mr. Gonzalez suggested that you do that with landscaping, but the fact of the matter is the block walls are required by code. So I'd like to concentrate on that. See where we're gonna go.
The only thing that I have a problem with is the cost and it's time consuming. It's not something that I'm going to accomplish most likely in six months as I was asked. Um, I would like to be able to keep my equipment on seventeen D and not move it to E because that's where our sprinklers are.
So let me interrupt you there. Is there any dirt flying around on seventeen A? Or is that parcel kind of benign?
A.
Yeah, the big long strip at the north. You have your little psych plan?
I I don't.
This one up here at the top.
That's Mr. Northeast Fence line.
Yep. It says you have storage.
That's, there's some storage along that fence line. And I would say that 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 long is probably where most of the dust was coming from, but there has been gravel laid on a lot of that since these pictures. We'd laid gravel in May right away and all the fronts, see the front seventeen E is the front property right against Fort Grant Road. I would be willing to try to move some of that equipment more forward, but be able to keep it on D. Because I think that's what that center parcel is.
It is an absolute condition that parking area is on parcel seventeen E. Um, shall occur only on parcel seventeen E.
Then we will do what we have to do. It's gonna be a terrible ice storm from Fort Grant Road, but we'll do what we have to do.
Thing is, the commercial corridor is along Fort Grant Road.
Right.
And so you have to remember you're in an R thirty-six subdivision kind of an atmosphere, so. Um, and then they talk, it talks about chip sealing. And that also applies to seventeen E where you've watered your grass. It's asking for chip sealing.
Yeah.
So the commission wants to comment on these. These are very stringent requirements here.
I would like to comment. And uh, stringent is as stringent does, but I know there are other types of fencing and wall that are less expensive than block wall. And uh, as Commissioner Gonzalez suggests, a six foot wall isn't going to stop the dust. It'll stop it up to six feet, but
It's gonna blow over.
Goes up to the moon, right?
What it will stop, if you'll allow me though, is the drift, is the sand drift at the bottom. And that, I think that's all they can hope for. That is the only reasonable requirement.
The upwind side of any wall is going to collect dirt.
Right.
And it will start piling up. I've done it. I've seen it.
Yeah.
And um, then that dirt has a lower threshold to get over when it's already three feet high. Um, it's a very temporary and minimal fix to this problem. Um, if it is a problem. I know it's inconvenient and nobody wants to live, you know, in a cloud of dirt. Um, I'm suggesting maybe there's a less expensive wall.
Right.
Okay.
I I.
And I don't have the code before me, but I don't believe it specifies a block, concrete block.
Mr. Taylor?
Uh, Madam Chair, the um, GB standards, when it references block walls along an adjacent residential, it does state at least six foot block wall.
It does say that, of course, and as if anything else, that could be modified. So um, I would, if it is required as a block wall today, I would move to have that um, modified to some other kind of wall, if any, maybe even forget about it, maybe uh, plant life vegetation and some lesser wall. Because we've all agreed it's a temporary fix and it's not even a good one at best.
Right.
So.
I haven't agreed to that, just for the record.
Go ahead.
I think a block wall would solve so much problem. It would stop the dirt drift at the bottom. The dust would continue as it does in Wilcox and I think it's a perfect solution in that area. Now, if we want to waive the requirement for block walls in other areas, so be it. But I think the block wall on the eastern portion of seventeen D is a must.
That might require a vote.
You bet.
Of opinion.
Right. So this this is why I wanted to go through this and see what the what the client was all in on, the applicant, and what the commission thought about these things and I mean, there's a lot here. What about the chip sealing, Ms. Wartman?
I I, what all do they want chip sealed?
Well, it says seventeen E.
So they want seventeen, we need to chip seal seventeen E, which is where there's natural vegetation and it's being watered. And that's not where the dirt is currently coming from. It is coming from the back fence line, which would be A D, is that B? Parcel seventeen B.
Where you say your storage is, is seventeen A?
No, seventeen E is right along the fence line.
Which which fence line?
The Fort Grant Road.
Yes, yes, seventeen E is Fort Grant.
Which is where you're telling me that we need to put the equipment. Where the equipment is currently sitting is seventeen D.
Yes.
The parcel behind that is seventeen B, correct?
A.
A?
By behind going toward the north, Mr. Northie.
That's where the dirt is blowing from. It's not blowing.
Well, that's what I was trying to get at. Yeah, I was wondering.
Yeah.
Yeah. So if if you protect the capitals with the block wall, then I I would think the others could be completely negotiable.
Right.
It's kind of my thought. Commissioners, Mr. Gonzalez.
If the block walls were effective, you would have a block wall between the north, the east and west lanes of the interstate. They don't work. The best thing you got going is that that dust blows through and goes somewhere else. I think it's unreasonable to have people that own this property be uh, asked to solve a problem that starts probably in Tombstone. And it's gonna keep going all the way to Lortsburg. Uh, we have dust storms every year and millions and millions and millions of dollars and hundreds of scientists that look at the dust problems along the interstate. Their best solution so far has been vegetation, brush and in specific corridors to slow down the dust, to drop, deposit the soil and all that. I've never seen a paper where they were suggesting block blocks be dropped or built or something.
Right.
It's always been uh, your best solution is to work with what you have, with what you have is salt tolerant plants that are well adapted. If you look at this picture, you can see circles of sprinklers for vegetation as a.
And it's greener than that now. It's greener above that.
Oh, yeah. But it's treatable, it's doable.
Right.
Vegetation.
With natural vegetation.
And it's not gonna make you go out of business.
Correct.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Limbach.
Well, I understand the cost and the inconvenience part of owning a business is complying with the county regulations. So I don't see where there's any negotiation uh, with the block wall. And I agree with you that a block wall is more effective than shrubs with this situation.
Well, it depends on what we're talking about. Are we talking about airborne dust or dirt? So there's two separate. Yes, what Mr. Limbach said. Um, I was wondering where the commission goes from here. I lost our attorney.
Yes, he just left the.
Everybody's gonna ask him a question because, Mr. Gonzalez, you're gonna have to vote no on this special use because you don't like number four, but that effectively puts them out of business.
Well.
Because they, they're not getting their special use.
Motions can be modified, Joe.
Right. So you're, are you going to modify or?
Well, can we modify the requirement for a business with a block wall? That's a.
I didn't think that was negotiable. We can issue requests to waive requirement.
Barrier. Not necessarily blocked.
That is not what we're being told.
Well, then we need to change it.
Yeah, I agree.
Madam Chair, um, just to point a clarification. The GB zoning district requires the block wall and adjacent to residential. We're requiring it as a condition, but it's not mandatory compliance on the part of the applicant if it's not a condition because the property's not zone GB. Um, I hate to sound like Captain Obvious, but we admitted this in the intent that we could have the applicant move the storage area to seventeen E, but during my conversations with the applicant, we realized that that was a bit of a challenge for them because of the investment they've made.
Sure.
And attempting to revegetate that property. Um, we still do believe that all driveways and parking areas should be chip sealed and a block wall should be placed on the property in those areas to reduce the amount of dust that's fugitive dust that escapes their property onto adjacent properties. And if there's another mechanism for some sort of a screening or fencing in lieu of the block wall that would be as effective as a block wall, then uh, the commission should entertain that.
Agreed.
Okay. Thank you for your.
So someone needs to make an alternative um, motion to correct number four. And it's a substantial ask.
Can we wait for our attorney to come in?
Yes.
Just getting a drink. Hmm.
So in the meantime, can we consider an alternative, alternative that's equally effective?
Yes. Suggest something.
I mean, changing the fence with some type of.
I don't think we have to specify the technology. It's just a barrier. Just call it that.
Well, there has to be some standard. You could put up pallets and that's like, that's a barrier. It's not gonna be doing it.
A solid barrier.
My neighbor did.
Very well, yay.
So, Mr. Attorney, we need your help. You you knew that was coming, right? We're hoping to reword number four, but it's so meaty that we need help putting that together. And they're suggesting different wording instead of block wall. Could we use the word barrier or could we use chain link fence with um, cloth? Uh, could we use the words trees or landscaping? What, how do you suggest we solve this?
To be as specific as possible, if you have something specific in mind or or you can be more generic, general, if you want to say um, any impervious barrier wall or fence. Uh, that that's pretty much what all you would need. And it says to me, which may include block, wood or others, as long as there's, it's completely impervious and there's no uh, slots, slats between them, for example. So.
Sounds like the perfect.
Miss that word.
So I would say it would be uh, part of that consideration.
Say again?
You're gonna build an impervious wall.
Or fence.
That could be made out of uh, a variety of material.
Yeah, and impervious wall or fence
constructed out.
Oh, of a solid material which may include block, wood, or other material.
But some of the commissioners are suggesting vegetation.
If if you're acceptable to vegetation, then you can say that as well. I mean, basically.
The commission is is split. That's our problem.
I see. Well, that that isn't necessarily a legal question then. It's more of just whether the commission wants to broaden it further to a non-wall or fence structure to actually vegetation.
So should we take this one, should we take this one thought at a time on item four? Do we want? Someone needs to make a motion to change it to impervious or any? You know, any anything vegetation.
Does it effectively reduces the uh, accumulation of dust damage?
Yeah, well, that's gonna be impossible. Like you said, maybe you don't want to let let that be the standard. I think you could take two votes, one on the broader, which is any wall or fence uh, that's solid or vegetation that's no further than two feet apart, something like that. Vote on that. And if every, if you get the vote, then you're good to go. If that gets voted down, then you vote on broadening the definition of what type of fence or wall and see if that gets passed.
This commissioner would like to unburden the applicants to an alleged obligation to a six foot block wall. I that's, I think that's overkill. It won't work anyway and they should have other options.
That's why we could start the vote on a broader definition that includes vegetation. And if it passes, then you don't need to discuss it anymore and you've met your objective.
Are you authoring motions this afternoon?
No, I I don't think I can. Can I? But one of you could, right?
Could you sample us a motion?
Yeah, I mean, I uh.
Mr. Montgomery, write this down.
Yeah. I move to amend.
Make me.
Number four to change the wording where it says block wall to any solid wall or fence structure or any landscaping. I mean, we could start with that. And at that point, everything else can remain the same. Now, you haven't dealt with the chip sealing and all and this seventeen E and all those other issues.
That's next.
But that would solve that one. And if you want to be a little more specific on the vegetation, you could, per your normal standard language that you would use when you require vegetation. But that's all you have to replace is the block wall part. I move to change the wording block wall to this phrase. And then you vote on it.
You seem ready, Mr. Montgomery, to make a motion?
I will attempt, but um.
Let's hear from Mr. Taylor first.
Uh, Madam Chair, just uh, maybe to simplify things a little bit, the phrase solid screen is also in the zoning regulation.
Lot of room for interpretation on that, isn't there?
Certainly.
Exactly. I was thinking.
So maybe you like that.
Your solid may not be somebody else's solid. Um, and it could be a combination of solid and landscaping and vegetation, something. It's a barrier. Again, it's temporary and limited use.
Mr. Taylor, what do you, what is the wording that you normally use when you require some kind of vegetation as an alternative, like on along roadways?
Um, zoning regulations typically will require a five foot landscape buffer. And then we've required that along property lines in previous dockets.
And then you you obviously. And then you, you obviously define that elsewhere or somewhere what a. Five foot landscape buffer is and clearly you know when it's met and when it's not met. So you could just say either a. Six foot. You know, either a six foot.
Impervious.
Solid, impervious wall or fence. Or a landscape buffer. Uh, that would comply with our, our normal standards.
I think that'll do it. Easy for you to say.
Right?
Um. Okay. I, we'll rehearse this one time, okay?
Okay.
I do have the wind down too.
Unofficially, this time, I have number four. Where is the motion, please? Um. Is, uh, all vehicle equipment and materials parking stores shall occur only on parcel, um, that does not seventeen E, uh, driveways, thank you. A block wall at least six feet in height with a five foot strip of landscaping shall be built along the south property line of that parcel. If, uh, parking and storage activities continue to occur on parcels A and D. Chip seal is required to reduce dust and erosion and a block wall. And a solid wall. A perceived solid wall and or landscaping or vegetation. Um, of at least six feet in height. Shall be provided along property lines shared with parcels, uh, three D and sixteen D and sixteen F. Well. Works for me. Anybody else?
Well, we did. Did we amend it?
You need to move, move for it, right?
That is the proposal.
I thought you just read it.
It's proposed to bend, yeah. That's the change we wanna make.
I, I don't know if I understood the change anybody just said.
What we wanna do is remove the term block wall.
Yes.
Anywhere it's mentioned in number four and replace it with.
With, um, any solid, um.
I surrender.
Barrier.
Will that Mr. Limbach make a motion to see if he can get this accomplished?
If we amend. Number four. Uh, to replace block wall. With six foot impervious wall or fence of a. Okay, six foot impervious wall or fence or. Landscaping buffer along property lines. Is that?
As required.
As required. And number four.
So I think that's a decent motion to replace the block wall references in condition four. With that language.
The sticking point with the commission is gonna be or.
Right.
The landscaping buffer. Or some.
So you could vote on. Or first, and then if that fails, vote on and.
Think either.
Or just, or just the impervious and forget the.
Yeah, and forget the landscape.
Yeah.
So let's vote on impervious first, please. Um, so the motion is to change block walls to an impervious wall, which leaves the. Uh, applicant open to other materials than a block wall, but it is still impervious. So we have that motion on the floor. Do I get a second for that?
Second.
Mr. Gonzalez, thank you. Now let's take a vote. Mr. Limbach, do you want to change that?
I would, would.
Well, Mr. Saunders, go first.
Vegetation is not on there?
Not yet. We're voting on the word impervious. Essentially, we're voting on the word, should it still be impervious?
Thank you.
Correct?
I thought we were adding. I thought the, this vote was gonna be impervious wall or landscape buffer.
No, because those two things are different. Impervious is one thing. A landscape buffer cannot be impervious. It's impossible. Oh.
No, I, I misunderstood. I thought that's what the attorney said.
Yeah. How can landscaping be impervious to sand?
Well, you had actually said, which I agreed with, which was impervious wall or fence. Or a landscape buffer.
That was my understanding.
The landscape buffer, obviously a landscape buffer by itself cannot be impervious. That is true. Whatever your normal landscape buffer would be that you would approve, that's the landscape.
This language would give.
You're basically saying either, either do a landscape buffer or do an impervious wall or fence.
Right. So if I'm, if I'm opposed to a landscape buffer, I would vote no on, on that.
If, if you're putting the word or in there, then you would vote no on it.
Right.
And if that fails, then you guys can scale it back and say. Okay, then what about just the impervious wall or fence with no landscaping? Would, and see if that passes.
What about an impervious fence to include landscaping?
Well, landscaping again cannot be impervious. Cause that means it gets, impervious means you can't get anything through it essentially.
I'm not so sure that I want impervious.
You don't have to. You could say solid.
We're voting on.
That's what we're gonna vote on. Do we want to keep the word impervious?
Yeah, we're valid.
Not one word, right? I don't want the word impervious in there. I don't fear.
Well, then let's take a vote because I think this is what we have to separate these motions. Let's vote on impervious first, then we can vote on something else.
Do I agree that impervious and solid is somewhat in all your minds somewhat the same?
Yes.
No.
Okay. And so if you're objecting to that, you're basically saying that's just too onerous to have them put a solid wall or fence at all, correct?
Yeah.
Right. So you should vote on that first. Uh, whether that's even required at all, and then see how far you get.
All right. So the motion is to clarify solid slash impervious. Needs to be included in item condition four.
So in this one, we're not including the landscape.
Correct. We're not voting on that yet. We're gonna see if the impervious works first.
Okay.
Okay. So, Mr. Limbach, are you prepared to vote?
Uh, my vote is yes to the impervious.
Mr. Montgomery?
This is for an impervious six foot high barrier.
Yes.
Of, of undefined material.
Yes, yes, solid.
Okay, yes.
You're saying yes?
Sure.
Mr. Ambries?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez?
No.
Ms. Fickett?
No.
Mr. Martsky?
No.
Mr. Saunders?
No.
Okay. And chair votes yes. So we have.
I would like to reconsider, Mr. Attorney. Can I change my vote?
Change the vote then.
It's a tie.
Yes, but I do not want, I don't like the word impervious. I don't like it.
Well, you surprised me with your vote. Can he change his vote? Or do I need to call for a second vote?
Oh.
All right, let's, let's clarify this one more time. We are changing the language of block wall to something similar. In item four. With the word solid or impervious. So let's vote again. Mr. Limbach?
Yes.
Mr. Montgomery?
No.
There you go. Chair still votes yes. Mr. Ambries?
No.
You're changing to no? Mr. Gonzalez?
No.
Ms. Fickett?
No.
Mr. Martsky?
No.
Mr. Saunders?
No.
So the noes have it. The words impervious and solid are too onerous. Now we're going to move forward. And try a different approach. Mr. Limbach, do you wanna put something together for us in a motion of, of impervious surfaces?
Well.
Do we wanna go to landscaping or not?
I mean, are we doing a combination now of an impervious barrier with landscaping?
No, impervious has been rejected.
Landscaping. I'm sorry, the opposite of impervious. I'm sorry.
To be clear, only a solid wall or fence has been rejected. There has not been any vote on. Either a solid wall or fence or landscaping buffer, because they may decide, you know what? A solid of wood fence is actually cheaper or easier. We can get more materials than planting a bunch of trees. So.
Well, we didn't, we just said solid or impervious surface of any type. So I would presume that we rejected the wood at this.
I don't, I don't know if that was the intention. If, if, I thought the intention, attention of the vote, it seems like was, that was the only option. Uh, but if that's not the intention, you should just clarify it.
That's what I understood.
The intention was to give them an option other than a, a brick. Wall, a cinder block wall.
So is that the only thing this commission thinks we rejected was the block wall? Or did we reject a wood fence?
No. I think in my mind, we rejected the block wall. Yes.
Okay. All right. I misunderstood that. I thought we were using the word impervious and that could mean anything. All right. So block wall has been rejected. Now what do we wanna do?
But.
Nothing.
And how is that different from what we just voted on?
Do we wanna require any landscaping or are you all satisfied that block walls are off item four?
But I mean, this impervious doesn't mean that you can't have some other, a wo, a wood wall, a fence. It doesn't say cinder block wall. It just says impervious wall or, or fence. That, that can incorporate a multitude of things. But we just rejected all of that.
Well, we rejected a block wall according to.
Well, no, we had rejected a pervious wall or fence. That's what we just voted on.
I'm okay with that.
Well, I'm not. I mean, personally, because that's not helping the neighbor at all.
It's my, uh, argument that no fence will help the neighbor. Be a very temporary and brief help and will soon be overrun.
So, Mr. Montgomery, do you wanna make a motion that we delete all references to walls in this item four condition?
Commission? Hello?
McLaughlin. I'm glad to hear your voice.
Okay, can you hear me? I, I have a suggestion. It sounds like in the spirit of keeping the options open. Uh, but also mitigating dust, what the commission might consider. Is just requiring a solid screen or landscape that achieves the equivalent screening goal over time. Just leaving it open. So it could be, it could be solid. It could be landscape. But as long as it achieves the goal of screening. Uh, that the commission is trying to solve. Uh, in that way. You know, it doesn't, cause landscape can be very expensive, especially if you're taking into account maintenance. And irrigation, uh, of a screening buffer. And they might find something that provides equivalent screening is, is a cheaper option. Uh, what's important here, it sounds like, is mitigating dust and also the site. Um, of, of the vehicles. So, I, I mean, it's something to consider.
Does someone write that down?
Ms. McLaughlin, I was glad you weighed in, but I'm not sure I. Got a direction out of that. This commission is rejecting block walls. Anything else is going to be impervious by its definition.
So it could be instead of saying block wall or impervious, just some sort of solid screen. It could be. You know, a, a chain link fence with slats. It could be a wood fence. It could be a block wall. It just needs to be solid in form. Or landscape that achieves the same goal.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
If someone wants to form that motion up, that would be helpful.
Ms. McLaughlin, would you mind repeating that little stated suggestion?
Sure.
Solid screening wall or fencing.
It could be solid screen or landscape that achieves the equivalent screening goal over time.
Look at that.
Wait, hold on. That achieves. Or landscape that achieves.
The equivalent screening goal over time.
Screening goal over time. So can I, may I repeat it to make sure I got it?
Sure.
Uh. So we're replacing the word. Block wall with a solid screening or landscape. That achieves the equivalent screening goal over time. Is that correct?
That's what I, yep.
Solid screening or landscape that achieves the equivalent screening goal over time.
One clarification, actually, you will be replacing the whole phrase. A block wall at least six feet in height with five feet strip of landscaping. Cause you've already got landscaping in there. So you'd have it twice if you just replaced block wall with that. So where it talks about what you need block wall and landscaping is where you need to insert that statement. And then likewise down below where it says block wall, that's where you would also.
So are we just replacing the word black wall with solid screen?
And removing the strip of landscaping.
Yes.
To put the statement exactly as she gave it to you.
And then we have to clarify where. Because it says along the south property line of parcel seventeen E. So we have to add to the end of the statement which parcels. Where you want this. Barrier.
Well, it would be, wouldn't it be seventeen D as in dog?
Chairman would suggest seventeen A and seventeen D, yes.
Seventeen along.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Taylor.
Should we completely disregard the first two sentences referencing seventeen E?
Yes.
All right.
Along parcels. Two zero two nine zero.
Well, I don't know about the chip ceiling, Mr. Taylor. We haven't gotten there yet.
One seven A. And one seven B. So can I read what I have just out of practice?
Yes.
Solid screening or landscape that achieves the equivalent screening goal over time. Along parcels two zero two nine zero one seven A and one seven D.
Did you say along what?
Along, along parcel, parcels. Two zero two. Nine zero one seven A.
Well, not all four sides. Which side?
Oh, I see what you're saying. Um, so we need to include adjoining the. Well, that's southwest, right?
I would call that the east property lines of those two parcels.
Along what, the east?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Solid screening or landscape that achieves the equivalent screening goal over time along. The east of parcels two zero two nine zero one seven A and one seven D.
Or you could say we're residentially developed currently.
I think that's a better option.
Okay, hold on. So along parcels.
Except, Ms. McLaughlin, that would force them into doing the, the north. Well, that, that would add a bunch of additional.
Yeah.
Fencing requirements if you say all residential.
Maybe right now be specific with, uh, parcel numbers. And the east, the east side of. Are you okay with that?
Yes, or you could be specific and say the, the property line adjacent two zero zero three Delta. Because that's the capital.
So along the property line of.
Adjacent to. Two zero two dash two nine dash zero zero three D.
What about a, a natural vegetation? We talked about. What along that east fence between myself and the Cavills? If we planted Arizona cypress every four feet on a drip. They grow fast. They're gonna grow together?
I think that would fit into this definition he's working on.
Okay.
Don't you?
Yes.
I guess.
Well, that's not, that's solid screen, so no, but.
Yes.
Or lands, okay, well, I'm sorry. Yes, yes, yes.
Escaping vegetation that is virtually impervious.
Maybe we should say and slash.
Any sand dunes at any lake or ocean and there's vegetation blocking the dunes. Um. It can be done.
I mean, we could do and slash or.
One clarification, so. Did we actually remove. The words block walls? That's gone.
Yes.
Right? Replaced by what you're coming up with, right?
Well. Ms. McLaughlin's good suggestion, yes.
But you've.
I don't wanna take credit for it. I just wrote it.
You might want to one.
You're getting credit for it.
So solid, I'll read it one last time. Solid screening or landscape. That achieves the equivalent screening goal over time along the property line. Adjacent to parcel numbers, blah, 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 blah.
Are you just a move?
I can live with that. There's enough flex in there, yeah.
So you can help me with, so amending, amending number four.
Condition four.
Condition four, specifically sentence three, removing the word black wall.
I would not say specifically three because it's mentioned below also.
Okay, so.
So just say.
Replacing the word black wall, do we need to say at least six feet in height with a five?
No, I would remove all that too.
Right, so a block wall at least six feet in height with five strip of landscaping, right?
That's great.
Are we keeping six feet in?
Not necessarily.
Well, no, because Christine's definition, it says it achieves, it achieves the screening goal.
Yeah.
So it could be four feet, it could be twenty feet.
Yeah. It's not necessary.
So removing a block wall at least six feet in height with five inch strip of landscaping shall be built, we're removing that whole sentence, right?
Yes.
So we're replacing that sentence with the following, solid screening or landscape that achieves the equivalent screening goal over time along the property line adjacent to parcel numbers two zero two nine zero one seven A and two zero two nine zero one seven D. Period. That was painful.
Yes, I understand that. And Mr. Taylor, will you add a budding? The Caphol property?
Oh, sorry.
Two zero two dash two nine dash zero zero three D, you'll add that.
I said adjacent to, so you wanted to.
All right, Mr. Limbach, did you, did you move to do what you said?
I did.
Say so moved.
I so moved.
Do we have a second?
Yes, a second.
All right, take Mr. Montgomery on the second. Let's vote again. Mr. Limbach, how do you vote?
Uh, yes, aye.
Mr. Montgomery?
Oh, yes.
Okay. Mr. Umbris?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Ms. Vicket?
Yes.
Mr. Martzky?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders?
Yes.
And the chair will vote yes. So we have unanimous approval on what kind of barriers need to be written into condition four.
Well, we need to go through the law.
Yeah. Now we painfully need to consider the chip sealing sentences. We have removed the seventeen E parking requirement? Is it?
Based on the applicant's statements earlier, it sounds as though seventeen E really isn't a viable location for their parking, so we would still be with seventeen A and D.
That word onerous occurs to me when we talk about that. So then we've corrected the next sentence, the block wall sentence, and then now we're going to, if parking and storage activities continue to occur on seventeen A and seventeen D, which it sounds like Mrs. Applicant, do you intend to continue parking on seventeen A and seventeen D?
Yes.
Okay.
Conversation.
Who is speaking? So the chip seal requirement is in place on those parcels? I think commission should consider leaving those there. I think that will alleviate a lot of problems.
Yes.
Do we have any comment on that?
I have one quick question about the parking.
Can it not just be heavy gravel? I mean.
Well, let me ask you.
Already gravel there to begin with.
Yeah, and you've invested a lot.
To.
Yeah, you've invested a lot in gravel, but let me ask a snarky question. Is the gravel working for you?
Yes.
You don't think the dust is uplifting from the gravel?
No, I think it's much better than it was prior to all of that gravel being laid.
Okay, and our construction folks on the commission?
Yes.
That's okay, all right.
All in total, we've probably got, you know, driveways around the shop area where the vehicles, equipment are parked. I have probably over a thousand tons of gravel down already. So then to go back and chip seal, I'm negating all of the money that I've spent over the last several years.
Gravel. My question was about how much area is that?
How much area do you think is ungravelled?
It should be wherever they park or. Is your parking area all gravel?
Yes, sir.
It's all gravel?
Yes.
Traffic area should be covered, that's it.
Yep, where the boys pull their rigs out, they drive on gravel, they drive on gravel behind the office, out the driveway to Fort Grant Road, all of that is gravelled. There's one spot on, it would be parcel probably B, seventeen B, that's the back parcel, I believe.
No.
Oh.
Seventeen A is the one by Mr. Northerly?
Northie.
Yeah.
So that one, that is the only one that does not have a substantial amount of gravel on it at this point.
And in your opinion, is that lifting a lot of extra fugitive dust?
When the wind blows, yes, but our guys aren't driving back there.
All right, how did it get stripped?
That was covered in mesquites and when mesquites were removed, then.
Can you share with us your intention about that parcel? Are you going to gravel that ultimately too in time?
Yes, I would say that will ultimately.
Are you going to do it like the grass out front?
Well, I mean, if I can get sprinklers ran out there, it might be cheaper to do it with natural vegetation if you can get it to grow.
Yeah. So commissioners, are we leaning toward removing chip seal requirements as well?
Yes, we are.
But we were replacing with something though, correct, with gravel?
Placing that with gravel.
We would like to lean towards natural vegetation because that's not really an area of a lot of traffic for us.
Yeah.
So natural vegetation would be best for us, sprinklers and plant grass.
Gravel is plenty adequate, I know that. And so my, my.
But we need to modify the language.
We need to modify that language and I do think we need to make a motion to modify again. But I'm hearing two different things. Are we going to require gravel or say gravel or natural preparation?
Gravel or.
Yeah, that's right.
To give her the option.
Gravel.
Okay, would you like to tackle that one?
Give that practice.
I'd like to amend item number four. Replace the word chip seal with gravel or what's the right word, natural vegetation, landscape? Not, it's not a landscaping buffer, it would.
Receding?
Natural vegetation. Drought tolerant native vegetation. Drought tolerant.
Natural.
Natural ground cover.
Vegetation.
Yeah, what you said.
All right, one more time. I move to modify item four.
I move to modify item number four to replace the word chip seal with gravel or natural vegetation.
Second?
Second, second.
All right, let's vote that one through. Mr. Limbach?
Aye.
Mr. Montgomery?
Aye.
Mr. Umbris?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Ms. Vicket?
Yes.
And Mr. Martzky?
Yes.
And Mr. Saunders?
Yes.
All right, so we are in agreement on that modification. Mr. Taylor, do you have that? Commissioners, is there anything else we need to discuss about these recommendations?
Modifying one, two, three.
So the county right of way and floodplain permits are in place, the hard surface driveway aprons are required. And you need to certify your propane tanks. No problems with any of that? All right, where are we? Yes. Mr. Taylor, will you be able to read number four to us as amended? Are we?
We'll keep our fingers crossed.
Number four has been eliminated entirely.
No, yes, no.
Well, the Madam Chair, the motion could just read with condition number four as amended.
Okay.
Yeah, we could do that.
Let's hear your recommendation and summary. Let me first ask the applicant, do we need to discuss anything else?
I believe so.
Okay, all right, and you feel that you can comply?
Yes.
May not be pleasant, but you can comply.
I don't know if that can happen or not, but.
Yeah, all right. Is it?
I don't be well enough to know that I'm not that neighbor anyways.
Yeah, okay.
I will go the extra mile to do what needs to be done.
Okay, and Mr. Taylor, is there a timeline on this anyway?
That gravel needs to be at least two inches back ground.
There is a county standard, Mr. Taylor, is that it?
Yeah, the standard is two inch gravel.
I think what we'll do. Yeah, Ms. Caphol? Ms. Caphol, let me say that we've heard from you and we have turned ourselves inside out to try and fix this in a way that's good for both of you. And so I'm going to ask you to stand by and read what we come up with afterwards and you know, we thank you for your, for your input. That's the best I can do at this moment in time. We need to move forward and solve this. And I think the county's got regulations that will protect you further than what you're protected now. Mr. Taylor, your summary.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Based on the factors in favor of approval, staff recommends approval of docket SU twenty five twenty four to allow a contract construction service with the following conditions. These are conditions recommended by our engineering department. County right of way permits are required and a floodplain use permit is required to ensure stormwater runoff meets, does not exceed the requirements. Hard surface driveway aprons are required along Fort Grant Road to preserve the edge of pavement. Propane and fuel tanks shall be certified by the state fire marshal's office or applicable reviewing authority. A solid screen or landscape that achieves the equivalent screening goal over time is required. We're also replacing chip seal with two inch gravel and natural vegetative cover. And those would be along. Or, thank you. Right, and those would be along the parcel seventeen A and seventeen D where the parking areas are currently. And specifically to include the property line shared with parcel zero zero three D. And the standard conditions after that relative to permitting timelines and modifications of an approved special use still apply.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Believe it or not, we have a motion on the floor to approve docket SU twenty five dash twenty four. I would like to now call for the vote. Mr. Limbach?
Aye.
Mr. Montgomery?
Wholeheartedly endorse this effort and will vote aye to approve it.
Mr. Umbris?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Ms. Vicket?
Aye.
Mr. Martzky?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
And the chair also votes aye. And I want to comment that I really love this commission. We work hard to do the best we can with a situation that is sometimes very difficult from sitting up here.
Yes, ma'am, you've done a great job at it also.
All right.
This entire country was founded by a committee.
Thank you, Mr. Montgomery. Yes. The motion carries, any individual disagreeing with this action has the right to appeal to the board of supervisors within fifteen days. An application for appeal is available from the clerk at the office Monday through Friday, eight to five, or online at coaches dot az dot gov. And thanks also go to our attorney. Let's take a five minute break. If we can hold it to five minutes, I appreciate it.
We have learned every dime. Oh, it's funny. Well, we just like to go with this. You need to submit, you can do stuff, don't? You don't even agree with that, right? Considering you've got three people, three months, so it's still, maybe. You don't have yet. It's time, but it's. But solid.
We have online? We have online?
Do we give everyone till six ten? We're here, let's move forward. Docket SU twenty-five dash twenty-six Charleston Road Containers. The applicant is Matt Falk. He has requested a continuance to the November twelfth meeting. Could I please have a motion to table docket SU twenty-five dash twenty-six?
Oh.
Thank you. Everyone in favor, say aye please.
Aye.
Aye, please.
Any nays? Hearing none, this is table till November twelfth.
Just now.
Finally, we have SU twenty-five dash twenty-seven Parker Ranch Solar and Data Center. The applicants are Luis and Maria Moussa. Are the applicants present? Thank you for your patience, folks. Could I have a motion, please, to approve docket SU twenty-five dash twenty-seven?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Limbach?
I move to approve docket SU twenty-five dash twenty-seven with conditions recommended by staff. The factors in favor of approval constituting the findings affect.
Thank you.
You, Mr. Saunders. We please have the planning directors report.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. This is the staff presentation for docket SU twenty-five twenty-seven, especially use authorization request to allow a solar facility with data center. The applicants are Luis and Maria Moussa. The property is located on Parker Ranch Road near Wilcox, parcel number three zero five four three zero fifty-one F. The property is about forty acres. Property is owned RU four, and the comprehensive plan designates the future land uses as rural. Property is currently undeveloped, and again, the applicant proposes a solar energy facility with data center. Property is located approximately two miles east of Kansas Settlement Road. Again, this property is undeveloped. It is surrounded by other forty-acre parcels also zoned RU four. The nearest residential property is located approximately one-third of a mile to the east. There are a few drone images. This would be viewing to the north. Also viewing to the north, a little bit closer shot. And viewing to the northeast, and you can see some of the nearest residences off to the top right of the screen. The applicants apply a site plan showing their development plans for the property. They are proposing six blocks of PV panels, warehouse and equipment yard, as well as the data center itself. The property does not have direct access to Parker Ranch Road, but can access Parker Ranch Road via multiple dedicated easements. And the applicant will need to coordinate with SSVEC for grid access. Section two point four eight of the zoning regs identifies ten factors to evaluate special use requests. In this particular case, nine factors do apply to this application. As proposed, the project would comply with the applicable factors. This would be a non-residential land use with limited impacts on local services and infrastructure, potential benefits to electrical grid resiliency. This would again would be a low water use in the Douglas AMA. And staff has not received any opposition from nearby property owners. Factors not in favor is as typical with some of the solar projects we see, and this is quite a small project, obviously, and relative to some of the projects that have appeared previously before the commission. Future dust during destruction during construction and visual visual impacts may disrupt natural natural landscape views for area residents, and there aren't many area residents, certainly not on adjacent parcels. The applicants did mail letters as required by the zoning regulations on nine August, and staff further notified in accordance with the zoning regulations between fifteen and nineteen September. Staff mailed eighteen notices, receiving one written response in favor. And Madam Chair and Commissioners, this concludes staff's presentation of docket SU twenty-five twenty-seven, especially use authorization request to allow a solar facility and data center. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. This is a time for the applicant's statement. If you'd like to come forward, you have ten minutes to tell us about your project. Please state your name and address, sir, before you begin.
Yes, so my name is Luis Moussa, and I came here with Maria Moussa, my wife, and the address in question is Parker Road, Parker Ranch Road, Wilcox. My project, thanks to all of you for looking into my project, so it's a solar panel project with a data center connected, so it's forty acres, and the energy generated by the solar panel will power my data center and also will go to the grid. So what I want to say to everybody, so all code, you know, related to to the project and to the data center will be followed, and we want to make sure we're gonna be going according to the code and by the book on this project. That should be it. Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
You might want to sit closer in case we have questions for you. Is there anyone that wants to make public comment on this matter online? Seeing none, hearing none?
I would like to ask questions and make a comment, please.
Sir, please provide your name and address, please.
Yes, this is Huang Kwan in forty-seven forty-seven Wilcox, no forty-seven forty-seven South Santa Claus Main in Wilcox. And I was reading through the proposal. I do have some questions. I wonder if I should wait until after the presentation before I ask them, or should I go ahead and ask them now?
Mr. Kwan, this is just an opportunity for you to speak. This commission will not be answering questions from your comments.
Okay, very good. As I look through the proposal for this solar panel project, I want to register some concerns that I have as it affects our collective environment, and the key issues that I'm concerned with is for data centers, the water use tends to be very great, and I want to make sure that this does not impact further the water scarcity that we have in this region. The second concern that I have concerns power. As you may have heard, APS allowed or APS service many data centers in the Phoenix region. Customers have seen an astronomical increase in their the rate of their utility of their electricity, and they believe that the spike in the power require more plant capacity causing the increase in cost, astronomical increase in cost to residents of Maricopa County in the Phoenix region where the data centers are built and have been in use. So if this data center is going to be connected in any way to the grid, I would like to understand how much of an impact it would be to the capacity and to the ability of SSVCC be able to service all of us without increasing costs astronomically as what happened in the Phoenix area. The third concern that I have concerns battery storage. I did not notice that there were any specifications proposals for battery usage, but usually batteries, when they burn up, causes a lot of toxins to be released to the surrounding regions, and so that needs to be mitigated. And the last concern that I have is basically just for the general attractiveness attractiveness of the area. Now, this does not necessarily affect everybody, but the surrounding region, the surrounding neighbors, I believe that would be of concern to them.
Mr. Kwan, thank you. Your time has expired.
Thank you.
Thank you for being patient.
You're welcome. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Okay. Is there anyone else online?
There's only one else online that would like to speak on this docket.
Hearing none. Mr. Moussa, did you want to respond to anything, the commenter? Okay.
Yeah, so for the data center, it's gonna be the energy that is gonna need gonna be generated hundred percent from the solar panel. Based on feasibility study, it's looked like fifteen point five megawatt of energy gonna be generated by the solar panel, and the data center will not require that much. So I'm expecting actually on the opposite end, some of those energy will go to the grid instead. So I don't think that's gonna be something negative to to the area. It is actually beneficial in term of green energy generated by the solar panel and go on the Wilcox Power Grid. Hopefully, it's gonna lower the cost of electricity in the in the area, or even if it does not lower the cost of electricity, would be a portion of the electricity generated by the solar panel, which is green. So that's it. Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
The public hearing portion is closed. This is the time for commission discussion. Are there any questions from the commission for applicant or staff?
Yes.
I'm sorry, did you finish?
Okay, it's about the water, so the we are not gonna be using a lot of water or anything like that, or overuse of water, you know, in that area. I just want to make sure that the gentleman who was just talking knows that, okay, for our data center.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Questions?
Yes.
I do have a question. Anybody else?
Mr. Limbach?
Do you mind coming up front again? I got very little information about water usage from your application. And I know with data centers, there are several different mechanisms of cooling.
Cooling system, yes.
So tell me specifically about the water, like numbers of gallons per server and all of that.
I don't have a number yet, you know, so, but the way the system is set up, you have several cooling fans and flow circulation. Okay, and and it's reusable, so we are not gonna be flowing those water out to the way it work, it goes into a radiator, and the radiator cools the water down, and it goes back into the, you know, recirculation for cooling the system down.
And I'm sorry, what was the word that you said use that is used to circulate the water? What is it?
Radiator system with pumps.
Radiator.
Yeah.
Oh, radiator.
Yeah. So it's like recycling, so we are not gonna be flowing water, you know, so environment is very important, so that's the whole focus here. Green energy and, you know, keeping the environment safe. And also, other issue that we are going to address is the noise factor to we got that into consideration, so I don't think there gonna be any negative effects on the people living around.
I still would like to know, I mean, certainly you've done some research into the amount of water that's going to be used. And for me to feel comfortable voting yes on this, I kind of need to know, are we talking about hundreds of thousands of gallons? Tens of thousands, you know, what are we talking about?
Yeah, so it's gonna be some special fluids, okay, so coolant fluids that's gonna be used. Okay, I don't know exactly because probably the weather system work. I would estimate maybe hundreds of gallons in that order, you know? Yeah?
Hundreds of gallons of cooling or?
Coolant, coolant, so no regular water, so it'd be like coolant minerals, you know, used for recycling.
Anti-corrosion.
Yeah.
So it would be liquid cooling, just not water. You're saying there's no water used to cool the?
Yes.
And then your application suggested that Coches County, the community of Coches County is going to benefit from the energy from what's left of the solar panels.
Definitely.
But I mean, you do you have an agreement with the local power plant or?
Yeah, I mean, this is in working progress because we talked to the local electrical company, you know, so we are okay with it. Okay, and also it's not me who's gonna be installing, you know, so it's like some professional who's been doing that all the time, gonna come in and do the installation, and I also want you guys to know that the lot is set up for this kind of installment. Okay, so there's nothing, based on the feasibility study, all the equipment is already in place for this project to move forward without us need to modify anything in the environment or anything like that, or adding very high pole, you know, electrical pole or anything like that. Okay, so the electrical pole is already set up there, so it's just like to to take those power and send it to the grid.
How is it gonna get to the grid? Because isn't this many miles away from the nearest?
No, no, there are poles close to where we are, yeah.
Okay. I'm done, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Montgomery?
Quickly, yes, sir, thank you. Described as a solar energy facility with data center.
Yes.
Maybe not everybody knows what that is. Could you tell us?
Yes, so solar energy, I mean, we are in Arizona, so and the heat, I mean, the sun is, you know, all over the place, and this is, I think, is a very good way of using that wasted energy. So you got solar panel set up, okay, all over the place, and based on the feasibility feasibility study, this panel gonna move okay, in the direction of the sun to give the maximum efficiency.
Okay.
Okay, and the maximum, it looked like the maximum power we're gonna be generated on that forty acre would be fifteen point five megawatt of energy, and this energy would feed, because we are concerned about data center sucking all the electricity in the in the neighborhood. Hundred percent of the energy that the data center will need will come from the installation of this panel.
Part I'm curious about is the data center. What is that?
Yeah, so a data center is a building with servers and computers installation in there, and the way it work, so you we use those energy from the solar panel to keep those equipment up and running, and the way this is gonna be beneficial for me, you know, like try to, you know, make some profit on, so it's gonna be based on hosting, you know, so everybody who, you know, like have a, you know, would like to have a server, you know, in Tucson or in Wilcox, Wilcox in this case, so they will contact me and go through the agreement, and, you know, then I will set up the the equipment, you know.
Businesses or individuals are both could store data.
Yes. Yes, and also it's gonna be cheaper than, you know, the regular price, you know, for running your your system using this electricity.
You'd be competitive.
Yeah, competitive too, yeah.
Good, that's, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yeah. I have a question. Your proposal shows that you're looking at forty acres, right?
Yes.
But you also own or control land around there to total. But you also own or control land around there to total of 240 acres.
So I don't own them, I wish, you know? So I'm, I'm gonna plan to buy, you know, as much around as I can, you know?
Well, there's fixed plots, right?
Yes.
And you're only negotiating out of, you only control one of those?
At the moment, yes, yeah. So I'm negotiating to get, you know, you know, anything around. Hopefully, I can get all the remaining acres, yeah.
How long will this take?
Pardon me?
How long, how much time will all this take for you to expand?
The expansion would be, the expansion, I'm hoping would be really quick. Okay, so maybe once I own all the land, if I need to do expansion, so I'll probably come back here and talk to you guys again, you know, yeah.
So you said something about 15.5 megawatts?
Yes.
What percentage of that would be going into the grid that benefits our area?
Yeah, so I'm thinking about 50/50, you know, split, so.
Seven, eight?
Yeah, uh huh, in that order magnitude.
So if you were to expand it all the way to 240 acres, would we still maintain that 50/50 agreement?
Yeah, I mean, it's also about the community, right? So, yeah.
So it's relatively small. And I'm like my colleague, Commissioner Montgomery, really don't have my brain around the service that you're going to provide and how and how that turns into an economic opportunity for the people in this country, in this area, you know?
Yeah, so I'm hoping in this country, you know? Yeah, so definitely in this area, if anybody would need, you know, have a server, you know, or need to run a special, you know, computers and server, but the electricity is too high, you know? Like for, normally, we got cheap electricity like for company, but for individual, this could be a big problem, you know? Because the rate is like 15 cents per kilowatt hour nowadays. And this can get really expensive fairly quick. So running some, some of those equipment, we are talking about like $3,000, $4,000, you know, if you are running those type of thing in your house, okay? So for me, like probably around 8 cents, you know? So that's about like 50%, uh huh. So significant reduction, you know, in price there for anybody who want, yeah, to use the data center to, for hosting, yeah.
Yeah. Well, in terms of the wildlife and the environment, not a lot of impact, because you're gonna have a building with computers, that's it.
That's it?
And it's a small, how big is that building?
So the building itself would be between 1,000 to 1,200 square feet, yeah, in that order of magnitude. So not, not a big castle or anything like that, you know? But sufficient to host as many equipment, you know, for demand and whatnot, yeah.
So if you were running at full capacity, what would it look like? Several buildings, a huge building?
Oh, you mean like if I'm doing the expansion?
Yeah.
If I'm doing the expansion, let's say, okay, so it's scalable, right? So right now, it's like 40 acres, okay? And we are getting 15.5. So like, let's say, the entire lot is like 400 acres now, you know? So we are talking about 155 megawatt of electricity. I mean, that's pretty huge, yeah. Probably I'm gonna need two, two or three data center, you know, for this type of setup on the entire 400 acres.
And how much? You say we're gonna work a 50/50 deal?
Yes.
So we'll get seven or eight megawatts coming back to the people?
Yeah, so that would be 80 megawatt, you know, on 400 acres if, you know, if we do that expansion.
Financially, what does it mean to the regular guy that has a business? Half of his bill?
Yeah, yeah, electricity bill, yeah, definitely. Significant, significant. And especially for people who do not get that opportunity to get low-cost electricity, especially in rural areas and, you know, where installation add up to the cost of electricity, you know? Yeah.
Are you working at all with Sulfur Springs Co.?
What's that?
The local solar setup that we have with Sulfur Valley Electric out of Wilcox?
No, we are looking at a company in Arizona called Solon. Solon? Yeah, so it's a company in Arizona that do those type of job. Currently, we've been able to do 440 projects. And these are, you know, all scalable. Some, some is at 240 acres and some small project like mine. Yeah, so variation, yeah, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. Yes.
Other questions?
I do have a question. You never addressed how much water it was going to take for your operation. Because where your land is, there's not a lot of water there.
That's you. Yeah, so we are, I mean, we do have a well on site, but the well is for just regular water usage. But the water to cool the system down or coolant, so that won't be, we are not gonna be using water from rivers or water from the well to do that, yeah.
So you're gonna be converting water from the atmosphere to solar?
No, 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 it's coolant, it's like your car.
Just coolant?
Yeah, it's like your car. You know, you put your coolant in and it cool your engine down, and it keep cooling your engine down. Why? Because it recirculate around the engine. So that's the system we want to use, yeah, for the data center.
But how much water would take to get it started?
It's coolant.
No, water. You have to mix coolant with water.
No, 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 because these are, yes, because these are computers, okay? It need to be as clean and pure as possible. So you don't go and get some tap water and, you know, yeah, to those cooling, yeah.
Unless you hire me and I'll do that.
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
It's like in your car, antifreeze.
Let's get a couple, I'm sorry, madam chair.
Mr. Limbach?
Is this operation gonna be running 24/7?
Yes, it will.
So where will you get the energy when the sun is not?
To store?
Pardon me?
To store? Yeah, so it's gonna be batteries, yeah, is that your question?
Oh, so you are gonna have batteries?
Yes.
And then, isn't that going to increase the noise with generators and fans blowing during the, like, the evening hour?
Yeah, so there gonna be some noise, you know? But it's not gonna be that bad, okay? Because we are talking about, it's not, what I mean is like when the energy leaves the solar panel and go to the battery, that's, there won't be any noise there. The noise would be more like converting that DC power into alternating, which is a different type of electricity, before it goes on the grid. And that's no difference compared to, actually, it's, for my scale usability, we are not gonna need like a big generator or anything like that. So we are talking about a transformer. Transformer is a type of equipment we're gonna be using or inverters in this, in our case. Yeah, so the conversion of electricity would have some noise, you know, but nothing of significant.
And you're talking about possibly expanding up to 400 acres, which is also, not just expanding the data centers, it's expanding the solar field?
Yes.
Correct, okay. That's, that's it for me, madam chair, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Limbach. Mr. Embry?
Yes, how many people are going to be employing in that data?
Currently, we're gonna be two.
Only two?
Okay, two, because most of the, most of the technologies, high-tech, so automated, okay? We even use a battery and everything, so everything is set up, you know, in case of, you know, like moving the electricity to the battery and from the battery to the data center. And then to see, you know, so all this stuff is nowadays, it's fluent, okay? So we gotta start with two. But with the expansion, there gonna be more people coming in, you know? Yeah, so incremental increasing, yeah, with time.
Is this the same type of data center that Tucson rejected? And it went into the county?
No, I don't know what the data center of in Tucson, but it's not me who's, you know, in charge there, yeah.
The problem there was the water, I think that's.
Oh, yes, yes, yes. So, yeah, I'm looking, by the way, I'm an engineer, you know, aerospace engineer, so I'm looking into the environmental impact and, you know, paying a lot of attention to this, yeah.
So what they're doing, they're using electricity now?
Yes, so, yeah, this is a different model, because data center in Tucson, it's like we are using electricity from the grid, okay? So we are sucking a lot of the energy from the grid to power up their, you know, their equipment. But mine would be 100% on solar energy.
Another question. How would you protect those batteries from exploding? Would you have some kind of confined area?
Yeah, so those battery, I'm speculating now, because based on what I saw before, would be in some sort of, but they follow the code. Okay, there are protective codes that we can, there gonna be some, you know, like the electrical people gonna come in on site and, you know, check everything, make sure everything is done according to the code with the right protection, you know? But by the look of it, these are what we call lithium batteries, okay? We are probably one of the safest. It's not like we are using lead batteries or anything that will release gas, you know, lithium batteries don't, okay? And we've been very successful. So that's what we are using in Tesla, you know, like the Tesla core, okay? So these, I'm not gonna bring some cheap technology, you know? So that's not the fault here. The fault is, you know, let's do something nice, something great for the community and for everybody, you know?
Mr. Sandro?
Just to be clear, this is only for the 40 acres and nothing to?
Yes, so far, so far for the 40 acres. But I just want you guys to understand that I do have intention of expanding if I got that opportunity to.
But you would be required to come back for?
I would probably have to come back again here to meet the panel and, you know, hopefully, I would have a good track record by then, okay? You know, yeah.
Mr. Musa, how many acres will you be covering of the 40 with solar panels?
Probably around 35 to 37s, you know? And the rest would be for the, for the data center.
So 50%, is that what I under? Oh.
Data center.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. And your conversations with SSVEC, the local provider that you would be connecting to? You have no information on that? Have they accepted your application?
Yeah.
You're still looking into it?
Yeah.
Because it's really uncertain whether they'll even?
No, 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 it's gonna happen, because we just received a feasibility study. It's not just us, the professional already looked into it, you know?
So you have a consultant that's helping you?
Yes, uh huh.
All right, what is their name?
Solon.
S O L O N, thank you. And your fire protection is?
Yeah, so whatever the code requires to, you know, for, for that, for a solar panel system, it would be, you know, yeah.
You don't know which fire company would cover your land?
I don't know yet about that, but, yeah. So as long, once we get into the project, definitely, we're gonna get this address. All the safety precaution and everything related to the project would be addressed.
Okay. And do we know, does anyone have knowledge of the Wilcox AMA? Is this gonna fly with the Wilcox AMA? He's got a well already.
The air is made.
It'll be fine?
Absolutely.
Is what it, I have a question?
Yes, please.
What, how much capacity and batteries do you plan to put in?
The battery would be able to sustain the 15.5 kilowatt, uh, megawatt of energy, 4.5 megawatt, yeah.
You realize that one of those batteries is about the size of a semi-trailer?
Yeah, so we are talking about?
So if you've got, if you're covering, you're using like 35 acres of your 40 acres, it doesn't give you much room to put those batteries in?
Yeah, feasibility study already takes that into account, okay? So we are talking about containers, so probably four containers of battery is what can be required, you know, on site, yeah.
One of those only puts out 1 megawatt? One? Contained?
I'm thinking about 2 megawatt per battery, that's the Tesla spec, okay? Elon Musk battery, yes, its spec is 2 megawatt. So we are talking about 4, 5? Just remember that 6 hours of the energy would be already be consumed. I'm assuming same calculation what everybody else do, 6 hours of sunlight, okay? So the remaining is 18 hours to store for the, for the remaining of the night and, you know? So it's not, it's not gonna be 100%, which is like 15.5. So it would be, so that would be 20% less, 20% less. So 80% of that capacity, the battery will have to store.
Mr. Taylor, could you please go, oh, right there. I don't know if it's possible for Mr. Taylor to blow up the legend notes off to the right, but I don't see anywhere here battery. I see everything but storage batteries, unless I'm missing it.
This is just like a podium of a plan.
I guess that's one of my big problems, is there, there are a whole lot of unknowns. And we're hearing you saying things, but I'm not saying anything in print, holding you accountable. So that's my big problem.
Mr. Gonzalez?
So when you look at this thing, you're looking at 400?
you're looking at 400 acres of panels and you've expanded all this. Even 40 acres, uh, covered with panels is problematic from the standpoint of the ambient population in that very fragile area where you're in, in the center of a world-class bird corridor that is rich with all kinds of wildlife, from reptiles to mammals to everything else. And their flight patterns, the sandhill cranes, everything, including all of the bird watchers from Porto are not gonna be happy to see this beautiful cattle country wildlife area covered with solar panels. That's gonna be a challenge for it.
Yeah, and, and the 40 acres for now, it's not 400, right?
Well, it's 40 acres, but it's not just up there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh-huh.
Uh, it can grow quickly, like you said, and then you got 240 acres of panels.
Okay.
That's significant enough to confuse birds to think that panels are water. It's gonna affect the wildlife vegetation, the wildlife, the native vegetation, the reptiles.
Okay, so how about that?
The hydrology of, uh, the water that lands on the panels concentrates on one end and then it has to drain away from that area where the panels are. So there's gotta be, uh, a good hydrology study
Yes.
to cover that, uh, biological assessments, all of these things. I've been, I've walked through a lot of these panels here. I see dead birds, birds crash into them. And, uh, who's gonna be accountable for that?
Yeah, anything related...
That affects the insects and all that.
Yeah, so, uh, we're gonna do our study, especially, you know, we are talking about that expansion to 400, uh, 420 acres if, you know, uh, we will do the study to check if it's gonna impact the environment. So, uh, that's probably gonna be where the limit is for the project if we are getting into a situation where a bird is, you know, is hurting and, uh, wildlife, snakes and, and whatnot, you know, uh, into problem, yeah.
You're in a very fragile wildlife area there, uh, when it comes to especially birds. And, uh, and then birds are connected to everything that eats birds and so, uh, it's a, it's an issue. It's a problem that we face, that we've heard about, that people know about.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, that's why you don't see the whole eastern side of Cochise County covered with solar panels because some people don't like it.
And I did send letter to everybody, you know, in, the neighbors, you know, to get, yeah, to get the, uh...
We want him to soon enough. You think of me when you do it.
Pardon me?
Yeah, the neighbors are gonna, as soon as they find out what's, what the proposal is. They're very well organized, they're gonna have their meetings and all that, and they're gonna practice the whole thing. And so just be aware of it.
Okay.
I would like to add to that. Um, this commission has addressed several, many solar field proposals in Cochise County through the years, and they are always, uh, larger than that, but accompanied by, um, environmental impact, uh, even testimony from experts who come in here and talk to that matter, um, about wildlife, not just birds, but a lot of birds, but the ground life too. And the heights off the ground for these panels, how they tilt, where they will drain, all of the environmental impact that they have.
Mm-hmm.
So, uh, today we're not getting that, but have you studied that or you have...
No, yeah, it's in the plan, okay? So, uh, I got expert working on, on the, you know, setup and everything, and we've been doing that for years, okay? So it's not gonna be, again, not me going in and do that, that project, right? So...
I guess I would suggest, um, whatever goes on with this 40 acres, if you wanted to come back after for the other acreage,
Yes.
you might wanna present that information.
Yes, definitely, definitely.
My last question is unrelated to that, but it's about security. You didn't mention you might have two employees initially on your 1,200 square foot building, metal building on concrete or something like that. Uh, what, what about security for that operation? Would there be anybody staying there?
Uh, there're gonna be, um, security camera, you know, in place and, uh, and I'm, I'm planning of fencing, you know, uh, some sort of barrier, okay? Uh, and, uh, I'm, I've been thinking about maybe hiring a, you know, somebody for night, you know, uh, uh, security person to, uh, to make sure everything okay there during the night and whatnot, you know, especially when we are dealing with equipment. Um, yeah, uh, we are talking about service and, you know, yeah.
Well, uh, it is a pretty remote area, obviously. Uh, I, I guess I wonder what would the consequences be of vandalism or, or theft if there were no one there?
Yeah, yeah, so that's a very good point too because the area is like, uh, not too many people in that location and it's mostly based on the email, uh, based on the mail I sent, it's more like, uh, L and, L and C, you know? So company own most of the, uh, location around or probably, uh, investment lot, yeah.
Well, that's all of my questions today.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, please.
Uh, what kind of power do you have right now? Electrical power, is it a high-powered pole like a 69 KV or is it a residential?
Probably residential, on place, uh-huh.
Okay, like the one that's, that it comes to my mind is Central Highway. There's a power or a farm there, uh, solar panels. They're connected to the 69 KV that goes away. But on a smaller scale, that's one, do you have something high-powered in the area? Like I say, 69 KV?
Alrightly, the answer would be yes because, um, I just got the report. Um, can you give me a copy of that report? Interconnection, um, here it mentions the interconnection would be 12,470 watt point located within 500, uh, of the arrays. Uh, line, line side connected possibly without modi- modification of existing electrical gear. So, um, based on the study and the location we are, we are at, uh, it's look like, uh, uh, there's no need for any modification to the, uh, um, electrical grids or, or whatnot. No upgrade of existing infrastructure, okay? Solar monitoring equipment, including, uh, okay, so that's about the pricing and, and facility, uh, uh, monitoring. And also, um, um, these panel would be well-maintained, okay? Would be well-maintained and there're gonna be maintenance regularly on the panels. Just want you guys to know, it's not like it's gonna be, um, um, just set up there and forgotten.
Anyone else?
Do you own the property outright?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Mr. Taylor, has the applicant been presented with the solar codes? I, I lost the number, it used to be 1,800 something?
Yes, Madam Chair, we did discuss, uh, section 2.51 of the zoning regs, uh, during our pre-app.
He's aware of the fencing requirements and the decommissioning requirements?
That is correct, and those are some of the standard conditions that we've incorporated into our recommendation for this one.
Excellent, just wanna make sure.
Good question.
All right, um, anyone else? I think we should move toward hearing your recommendation, Mr. Taylor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Based on the factors in favor, staff recommends approval of docket SU 2527 to allow a solar facility and data center with the following conditions: County right-of-way and floodplain use permits, along with a grading and drainage analysis are required. The project owner shall submit in advance or concurrent with their first commercial permit a traffic improvement or maintenance plan which successfully mitigates potential project impacts to Parker Ranch Road. The applicant shall submit an emergency response plan in conjunction with the building permits submitted for county and fire responder review and approval. I'm gonna jump ahead here briefly to five. The project owner shall use PV panels with an anti-reflectivity coating integral to the panel, which is pretty much industry standard at this point. All solar racks shall be installed and maintained no less than 12 feet minimum clear distance measured from the outer edge of the panels between all rack arrows. A 4 to 6 inch gap beneath the bottom of the project-related perimeter fencing and ground surface shall be reserved for small ground animal permeability. Um, condition number four are some of the standard best management practices we have for mitigating dust creation during the construction process. And this is a fairly small site, um, but it nonetheless is a non-residential use that warrants these types of conditions as with any other solar facility or renewable energy project in general. Um, the standard conditions would still apply, Madam Chair. And that concludes staff's recommendation.
We do have a, a motion and a second. It is time for the vote. Let's shake things up a little, Mr. Saunders?
Yes.
You're voting yes?
Yes.
Mr. Marksky?
Yes.
Ms. Fickett?
No, I don't feel they have done, there's not enough, too many holes.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mr. Umbris?
Yes.
Mr. Montgomery?
Voting yes to support this, knowing that there will be much compliance needed in environmental statements and impact and wildlife and safety, uh, or else it cannot go forward. And I would hope to see this 40-acre proposal working very beautifully before expanding to another 360 acres. So my answer is yes.
Thank you, Mr. Limbach?
No, I have tremendous concerns with the unknowns of the project details and expansion and, as well as noise and environmental impacts.
Thank you. Mr. Taylor, would you move the slide backwards one? One more. I'm sorry, it says 13 on my screen. The picture. Go back one more. There you go. The chair votes no. Solar panels are a blight. They are unknown how we'll ever get rid of them once they're there. They're dangerous to wildlife, as Mr. Gonzalez pointed out. The chair votes a solid no for environmental reasons. However, this docket does pass, 5 to 3. Any individual disagreeing with this action has the right to appeal to the Board of Supervisors within 15 days. An application for appeal is available from the clerk at the office Monday through Friday, 8 to 5, or online at cochise.ez.gov. And I thank you. We have one more presentation, Ms. McLaughlin, are you still with us?
I am.
Oh, rest your heart.
Uh, yeah, and I, I do realize it is getting late. And so in the spirit of that, I'm, I'm gonna give the commission a couple options. Um, I am happy to move forward, I mean, we're all here and I'm, I'm there in spirit, uh, with giving this presentation, it's about 20 slides, it's gonna take me 20, 20 or so minutes to get through. Uh, I do plan on having a work session with the Board of Supervisors on the 21st at 1 o'clock. I will be presenting this presentation and pretty much the same topic, uh, it's the same presentation. So the options are, I can give this presentation now and I can give this on the 21st to the Board of Supervisors or we can, um, we can, we can go home. Uh, I can let you off a, a little bit early tonight. If you're able to join on the 21st at 1 PM, we could do a joint work session like we did the last time with the comprehensive plan. Um, that's the other option.
Input?
Can we join online?
You can.
I'm all for joining.
I realize that's kinda in the middle of the day, it's on the, it's on the 21st, which I believe is a Tuesday, it's at 1 o'clock, um, your call.
I'm more for the joint.
Anyone else?
I can hear the joint.
All right.
I got a long ways to drive home.
Chair attends the meetings anyway, so I'll be there. Okay, I think Christine, we have your answer.
Okay, great.
Yeah, you can go on with your vacation.
Yeah, yes, okay, um, yeah, so it, and if that's the case, thank you very much, there is a presentation attached. There is also, um, I don't know if you guys got a chance to look at it, the draft plan was attached. Uh, the purpose of tonight was to just give you a broad overview via that presentation, not to really go through the plan. Um, I'm hoping between now and the next meeting in November, uh, you all have a chance to go through the plan, um, and start to come up with some comments. Uh, tonight was meant to be, meant to be a presentation that'll now be on the 21st, giving an overview. The next meeting is when we'll have more of a discussion and, uh, more, just more of a, like a one-on-one kinda, go through the plan and come up with suggestions and, and, and really dive into the material itself. So that's, that's gonna be the next meeting. Um, if you do have a chance between now and November to read the plan or at least go through it, I'm happy to take any comments over the phone, by email, uh, however you wanna get them to me, would be fantastic. This is a very rough draft, there will be typos in it. Um, I do intend to keep kinda working on it between now and then. Um, so just, just keep that in mind. Um, the intent is hopefully by November to get it to a point where, uh, it's ready for a 60-day review. That's when I transmit it to relevant agencies, um, and, uh, external, like counties and cities with, uh, that, um, are required to receive the draft and review it. Um, after the 60-day review, it would come back to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a public hearing, um, and then it would go after that to the Board of Supervisors. So, um, so that is that. Um, with, uh, also on the 21st, there is a regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors for the downzoning, uh, that you've recommended. There's also an appeal, uh, for the Wild Horse Special Use Authorization that you heard a couple months ago. On the 22nd, the Board of Adjustment is meeting for a couple variances. And on the 12th, um, again, we'll have the comp plan. Um, we'll have also another work session, hopefully on public notification. And we'll talk about next month's meeting calendar. We'll have one other special use authorization and the tabled Charleston Containers Special Use Authorization. So that is all coming up. But other than that, that's all I got.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, all right, everybody have a good night.
All right. And the cop filling is easy to read, so.
Okay, well, great, great, yeah. I will take any and all comments, thank you so much.
Keep up the good work.
Okay, all right, you too. Thank you.
I will just sit.
Meeting is adjourned.